Good morning. Good morning. I will now ask Father Graham Bott to pray a blessing over our meeting today.
In the name of the Father, under the Son, and under the Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, we come before you to, in your service, to work for the good of all, and to fulfil the needs of those who aspire to great things. We ask you to guide us in our discussions, to inspire us by your wisdom, and to make us always mindful of the needs of others and the importance of listening as we seek to hear what other people say. We ask this in the name of Jesus the Lord. We pray, Heavenly Father, at this time for our nation. We pray for King Charles III, that you may strengthen, sustain, and support him at this particular time. We pray that the Queen and all the royal family may be strengthened by your Holy Spirit, that we and they may live in times of hope, praying for the right outcome for our sovereign. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. We pray for the people of our county. We pray for those whom we represent, those who guide us as officers of the County Council, that we may all be one in seeking to maintain the life of this county and for the good of all. This we ask for Christ's sake. I invite you to join with me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Please take your seats. Oh, these bloody seats, I tell you all. Good morning again. Are there any apologies?
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, everybody. Yes, we do. We have apologies from councillor Farrell, councillor Bernard Faulkner, councillor Jones, and councillor Jay.
Thank you. Are there any further apologies? Item two on our agenda today, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare any interest? No. Item three, confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting. I move that the minutes of the council meeting held on 14th of December 2023 be signed as a true record. Is that agreed? Item four on the agenda, Chairman's correspondence. I have a number of pieces of correspondence. His Majesty, King Charles III, on behalf of my fellow members of the council and the residents of Staffordshire, I take this opportunity to send best wishes for a speedy recovery to his majesty following the announcements early this week that he is being diagnosed with cancer. I'm sure we will send our very best wishes to our king. Staffordshire residents recognised in his majesty's The King's New Year's honours list. I'm sure that members will wish to join me in congratulating the following Staffordshire residents who have received honours in his majesty's The King's New Year's honours list. Officers of the Order of the British Empire, which is an OBE. Mr Kenneth Paul Newton from Stafford, services to public service. Professor Dave Fosket from Burton-on-Trent, services to hospitality, industry, and inclusivity. Those who have received members of the Order of the British Empire, the MBE. Mrs Jacqueline Mary Gange from my hometown of Cannock, services community in Cannock. Mr Rowan Edward Crozier from Lichfield, services to manufacturing and enterprise. Mrs Jill Alcock from Staffordshire and Morelands, services to the arts and charity. Professor Miriam Bernard, again from Staffordshire and Morelands. My apologies, I've read that wrong. Professor Miriam Bernard from Newcastle and Deloitte, services to ageing research and to older people. Dr Catherine Emma Baxter, services to higher education. And the medalist of the Order of the British Empire, which is the BEM. Mr Martin Peter Wild from Barton and Dunne Wood, services to a community in Tamworth. Mr Herbert Proctor, for services to the community in Audley. And Mr Stephen Roger Lee's JP from South Staffordshire, services to community in Himley, Swindon, and of course, South Staffordshire. Mrs Elaine Hutchings from Lichfield, services to community in Lichfield during Covid-19. Mr Peter Stuart Clemson from Burton-on-Trent, serviced performing arts and the community in Burton. I'm sure you share with me our warmest congratulations to those people in Staffordshire who have received their much deserved awards. Recognising our unsung heroes. Since becoming chairman, and well before that, I've been truly amazed by the number of voluntary groups across the county and the wide-ranging work they do to the benefit of the local communities. Members may recall that I mentioned at the fall council meeting last October plans to introduce an Unsung Heroes Award afternoon teas in county buildings to recognise the contributions made by volunteers across our wonderful county of Staffordshire. The first of these events took place on the 15th of December. It was very successful, and I had the pleasure of hosting representatives from eight voluntary groups from the Cannock and Lichfield areas, all of whom had been nominated by local members. The next Unsung Heroes event is to be held on Friday, the 19th of April, to which I will invite local voluntary groups from Stafford and South Staffordshire. Over the next 12 months, I propose to hold further two events. I'll be writing to members covering the Newcastle, Staffordshire and Morelands, East Staffordshire, and Tamworth district and boroughs to seek members' nominations. The next item on my announcements, it talks about a gift from the chief executive, John Henderson. On behalf of the members, I'd like to take this opportunity to extend the council's thanks to its former chief executive, John Henderson, CB, for his generous gift to the council of a framed Staffordshire County Council coat of arms painted on vellum by Frau Dr Marianne Voss. Mr Henderson's gift is now on the wall at the top of the main staircase in county buildings. Please, members, take the time to go and have a look at that. It is truly beautiful. Upon retirement from Staffordshire County Council, John Henderson received a gift from members and officers of the council of a bespoke Stafford knot cast in bronze and plated in silver. So please take the trouble to go and have a look at it. It really is a lovely picture. And my final announcement, which is a rather sad one. Former councillor David Nixon. It is my sad duty to inform members of the death of former county councillors, David Nixon. Mr Nixon was first elected to the county council in 2001 and represented the Thistlebury Electoral Division in Newcastle until 2005. He served on the former social care scrutiny committees and was also a member of a regulatory committee. In 2009, Mr Nixon was re-elected to the county council, representing the Cross Heath and Silverdale Electoral Division once again in Newcastle until 2013. He served on the former Children and Lifelong Learning Scrutiny Committee and Planning. I believe we have some people who want to speak about councillor Nixon. Councillor Simon Tagg.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Really sad when I heard of, obviously, the death of Dave Nixon. I've known him for over 20 years. And I think there's a lot of people in Newcastle Conservatives who were around at that time would say that they're in the Conservatives and still in the Conservatives because of the passion that David Nixon had for politics and for leafleting, getting us all out at the weekend leafleting, and that really set me on a stool to the direction I'm obviously in now as a county councillor and a borough councillor as well. I think his division of Thistlebury was part of my division. Also, he had Seabridge as well, which he represented from 2001 to 2005. So I was heavily involved with him on that campaign to get him elected in 2001. Then latterly, of course, he represented UKIP for the Cross Heath and Silverdale. Anybody that's experienced Dave Nixon's campaign will know it's very high-octane, I will say, over the years. And I think there's a lot of Labour councils that have been the victims of that and have lost their seats because of the work that David Nixon put in. I'll even say there's some on our side that had a bit of a scare in the past when David Nixon has challenged them through politics. And he was a real campaign, street campaigner, getting those leaflets through the door, which we all do, of course, but he really excelled in that. And of course, he was a taxi driver in Newcastle and Deloitte and throughout North Staffordshire. And I would get texts on a regular basis from him, "Have you seen that pothole there? Get that sorted." So, you know, the taxi drivers, when they're out and about, see the state of the roads. And I'll be, "Yes, Dave, I'll get on to that, Poolfields or Thistlebury or Westlands", and get those sorted for him. But the overriding issue for David Nixon and his political life was the European issue, and anti-European Union. And anybody that reads the Sentinel in the north of the county, even until recently, Dave was sparring with Lib Dem, former Lib Dem councillors over the issue to do with Europe. And he always won those arguments because I supported the position he took. And of course, in 2016 with the referendum result, he got his real political wish there. Also, he's a very religious man as well, and he would always be writing about his religious beliefs in the Sentinel as well. He was a devout Christian as well. So I think, you know, really sorrow when I heard it just yesterday, the news come through. And I send my condolences to his family. And also, he's well-known in the Audley area where he lived as well. And I've had some contact from various people in Audley who informed me yesterday. So he will be missed, I think, by people around the area. And also, we remember him from when he was a councillor as well, you know, and serving the community as we all do for those periods, both here and at Newcastle Borough Council. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, when I had heard that David had passed away yesterday, I was really quite shocked, actually, because he's not got a great deal of age. And brought back all sorts of memories of sparring with David, even when he was within the group. Because he did cross the floor and become an independent in UKIP within the council. And I remember him writing a letter to him saying, "I'm extremely disappointed in you, David", but I understood where he was coming from. Because the reason he did it was because he thought that the UK should not be in the European Union, full stop. As to campaigning, I have never seen anybody campaign like David did, even within this chamber on his own particular things. And I know that one of our more senior colleagues had the taste of his campaigning in an election and had his majority cut from several thousand to a few hundred. And he just campaigned. You know, so word of advice from David to you all, if you go campaigning, you might get there. Because lo and behold, we're not in the EU. I'm not sitting on a tractor blockade in London because we're talking to the government about how things can happen a bit differently. So David's legacy is possibly the benefits of Brexit that we've yet to take. So I think we ought to, if he was up there now, he'd be saying, "Get on with it. I can just hear him." And so David, bless him. He'll be missed by his friends and his family and those that loved him. And I love David because he's got even less hair than I had, which was something to be talked about. So happy memories, and that's how I want to keep it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Atkins. Can I now ask all members and members of the public, please, in a public way, to please stand and observe a one-minute silence in memory of councillor David Nixon? Thank you. Moving on to item five on today's agenda, which is the medium-term financial strategy 2024 through to 2029, and the 2024/25 budget and council tax. At the end of the debate, in accordance with statutory regulations, I propose to take a named vote on the recommendations before the council. Members are reminded that under section 106 of the Local Government Financial Act 1992, if they are two months or more in arrears with their council tax, it is an offence for them to vote on the budget. Members are also required to disclose at the meeting the fact that this section applies to them. Councillor Ian Parry, will you move consideration of the report, please? Councillor Alan Watt, will you second?
Motion, Mr Chairman, and I reserve my right to speak at the end.
Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. May I start, Mr Jim, with just to show my gratitude to a number of groups and individuals. Firstly, to my cabinet colleagues for what seems like a long period of discussion, debate, sometimes a few tiffs, in terms of putting this budget together. I'm very grateful for everyone's collective effort. And similarly, to the council officers, the corporate officer team of this council, for all their hard work in putting this budget and medium-term financial strategy together. In particular, I'd like to pay tribute to our Director of Finance. Thanks for making it this morning, ma'am. To our Director of Finance and his team, his upper team, Rachel Spain and Peter Shakespeare, for their professionalism and their wisdom and guidance in providing us with the options and ideas of this budget, which we as a cabinet approved last week and proposed to the council this morning. I'd also like to thank the Corporate Scrutiny Committee and the task group from the group chaired by Mike Wilcox for all of their work. It's gratifying to know that this medium-term financial strategy has been rigorously scrutinised by that team and who have presented us with plausible recommendations of which the cabinet has taken on board and will do so in the future. I'm immensely grateful to Mike and to the task group for all of that work. It is very, very helpful to us. And finally, Chairman, this is a whole council endeavour to put a budget like this. This requires everybody in the council facing the same direction to put in place the things that need to be put in place to make sure this council is financially stable. Chairman, quite recently, I was accused of being boring. I know. It was. It was actually a journalist, obviously, looking for a headline and who interviewed me, looking for that headline. And was clearly interested in a number of headline issues which he couldn't find. And then accused me of being boring. I'm afraid I'm guilty, Chairman, because if you like your medium-term financial strategy over the next five years balanced, if you like savings achieved, transformation achieved, an investable budget that's going to put £100 million into our infrastructure, then yes, Chair, this is going to be a boring session. Because that's what I think we've achieved. That's what I think we've achieved. We've managed to balance, I think, an ambitious corporate plan for this council and this county with a responsible attitude to finance that means that we do offer a balanced budget over the next five years. And that can't be said in many places. And perhaps it's because, we have, to misquote Kipling, "kept our head when those around us were losing theirs". Perhaps it is that we were taking brave steps to do things that need to be done at the time that needs to be done to get us to the place where we are now. Perhaps the £137 million of costs that we've taken out of this council over the last seven years is something that actually helps us to get into this stable position. And that's £137 million of not our money, of taxpayers' money in this county. People in this county, families in this county, would have to find and pay for that we've taken off the table and still have our libraries, still have investment in our highways, still have investment in our schools, et cetera, et cetera. That's the balance that we've struck, I think, Chairman, that we've been aiming to achieve. Need glasses these days, Chairman? There are risks, of course. There are, as always, there is the next challenge. And often, what's ahead of us is often more complicated than what's behind us. But I think we're in a fairly stable position. We had the financial settlement at Christmas time, just before Christmas. It's not a major aspect to it. There were no new grant streams. Overall, our spending power has increased by just over 6%, 6.8%. But overall, when you shake it all down, it means about an extra £3 million in cash. And some of that, of course, that income is derived from council tax. Those pressures and those risks that are ahead of us are largely to do with the things which is our paramount duty here in the county, which is looking after people. So the pressure upon SEND, the pressure upon SEND transport, the pressure upon more educational and child protection, child plans is increasing and is a cost pressure on the council. The number of children in our system, which is showing signs of slowing and slightly reducing, means additional cost pressures on the council, means that we've got to pay for all of those placements. And those are the places where actually the costs are rising significantly. Nevertheless, this budget provides for it. We've spent £11 million over the last year alone on children's services to ensure that we can continue with that transition, that we can keep children safe. We will put another £7 million next year into that transition and into ensuring that our children are safe. And some of that will include some of the work that needs to be done post-Ofsted. There are pressures across this county that we recognise, that we have a plan for, that we have budgeted for in this MTFS. And Chair, on top of all of that, we will be investing more in this county over the next year or so. We will be investing, and my cabinet colleagues over the next 12 months will be announcing plans to invest in things like our libraries, our countryside, our highways, our environment, moving towards carbon neutral, et cetera. So a wide range of investments that will improve quality of life, in a sense, over Staffordshire. And we love the quality of life that we already have here. But actually, there are things more that we can do in our future investments. This county is not only balanced, but it also has solid reserves, over £50 million in general reserves. And we have a contingency, simply because of the risks that we've been facing in recent years. There's additional cost pressures that perhaps we weren't expecting, such as increases in minimum living wage, which is increased cost pressures in our pipeline. Inflation, where we've put almost £50 million additional into inflation because of the cost pressures that that's provided in our contracts, in the suppliers, in our services, et cetera. But we've also put an extra £50 million next year, then reducing down to £10 million for contingency for those unexpected events that we can therefore meet. So I think overall, Chair, we can say that this is a good, sound, solid budget. Boring, perhaps, to some, exciting to me because it means we're not scratching around looking for major, major savings plans where big cost savings are having to be taken out of the organisation. Yes, we've got some challenges. Yes, we're going to have to make sure that our Zen Transport delivers on its transition. And same with children's. But overall, this is a good budget. I come to the council tax, Chairman. And our leader reminds us regularly that when it comes to taxation, when it comes to taking more money out of the pockets of Staffordshire families, we should do this with humility and with a cast-iron promise that we will be looking for best value and can offer that promise to the residents of Staffordshire, that we will deliver best value. If there is inefficiency out there, if there is waste out there, watch out because I'm coming for you. We will not allow that to happen in Staffordshire. We will not allow council taxpayers to have to take an increase like this. But given the inflation that we are facing, £50 million we've had to put into that, we will be taking a council tax increase, which will mean a 4.99 increase in council tax this year, which includes a 2.99 increase for a social care precept that is sent ring-fenced around, improving adults and children's care. And that will mean around £1,530 for a bandy property in Staffordshire. We're still a low council tax council compared to other shy counties, and we're still a low-cost council. So, Mr Chairman, I commend this revenue budget to the council. And I'm delighted to move the recommendations as printed in the agenda. Thank you.
Councillor Sean Atkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First, I'd like to congratulate the whole finance team for achieving a balanced budget in the face of huge challenges. But there's no room for complacency. It's not sustainable in the long term to use resources, to use reserves to plug funding gaps. The pressures from social care, both adults and children, from special educational needs and the high-needs block can't be discounted. The extra £600 million announced by this government last month is welcome, but it doesn't come near to the £1.6 billion which the Local Government Association announced is necessary to fill funding gaps. And that could easily have been announced in the Autumn Statement rather than waiting until the 11th hour. Now, our Director of Finance lists the hallmarks of a good budget. He says that a good budget must not be driven by short-term fixes. Yet we have a government that is proposing a local authority fire sale, encouraging councils to sell off assets to plug the funding gap left by massive cuts in central government grants. That's a one-off sticking past the solution, not a strategy for the future. Cash-strapped councils have already been forced to sell £15 billion worth of buildings since 2010. What makes it worse is that with a near-stagnant UK economy, this is probably the worst possible time to sell anything. Another short-term fix from the government is the statutory override, currently in place regarding the dedicated schools grant deficit. This is set to expire in 2025. The 2014 Children's and Families Act significantly increases demand for costly SEND provision, including home-to-school transport. The dedicated schools grant is far from sufficient to meet this rising demand. But rather than address the funding problem, the government has left local authorities with mounting DASG budget deficits. This is just storing up problems for the future. The County Council is likely to have a huge... The County Council is likely to have a huge thirty million pound deficit at the end of this year. The government delay to the introduction of the social care reforms delayed additional costs being incurred by the council, that was obviously welcome. But it isn't any sort of fix, it's not a short term fix, it's not a long term fix, either for the County Council or for the National Health Service, which is adversely affected by gaps in social care. Local government mechanisms are long overdue for reform. But all governments, of all persuasions, have shied away from tackling those challenges, putting them in the too difficult box. According to the LGA, almost one in five local authority leaders and chief executives of local authorities think it is very or fairly likely that the council will issue a section one one four notice this year or next year due to the lack of funding to keep key services running. The government cannot any longer just pretend that it is just badly run councils that are going bust. It is a much wider funding problem affecting all councils, including this County Council. The County Council has been lobbying the government for more resources, but that lobbying seems to have fallen on deaf ears. As adult and children's social care swallows up more and more of the county's budget, the County Council is fast becoming a social care authority with very limited ability to deliver other services and to support the wider community of local taxpayers. Residents will begin to ask, what is local government for if they're just paying for the delivery of social care? Until, of course, they or their loved ones need it. That is why local authorities need to be properly funded by taxation if they are not to be killed off. During the Covid pandemic, local government, including this County Council, demonstrated the value of its connection with and understanding of its own communities, which is supported throughout the crisis. Central government too must now recognise the role of local government and fund them appropriately, rather than constantly expecting local authorities to bid for additional funds. They need to be properly funded and we need to have reform to ensure that local government continues to thrive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Moxon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning all. Returning to the budget for this County Council and not national issues. I wanted to just speak a little bit about the investments that we've made in, in children's, in children's services. If you look in the detail of the budget, there's still, in the whole of the children's services, children and families, including what my colleague, Councilor Price, deals with, we send an education, what the County Council provide for, the budget is a hundred and ninety four million pounds, which is a significant investment in children, vulnerable children within this, within this county. The pressures that we have on our budget are generally twofold that I cover, and that's the placement costs, high end placement costs and the cost for that. And this council is working to do things about that. And at the next cabinet, we will present in a paper around our own children's, children's homes and also some of the costs associated with agency staff. But on a whole, agency staff within the, within the county and children and families is about ten percent, which is one of the lowest certainly in the, in the, in the region. And the things that we've done to invest in that is slowly reducing the amount of agency staff that we have. I think the, the leader of the opposition, and whether you think some of the points she made are good, bad or indifferent, there are some issues there that I think quite rightly need raising. But this today, I think, is about the budget for the County Council, where we are investing our money and what we have done over the past thirteen plus, plus, plus years to make those sensible decisions so that we are in a really strong and stable position, so that we are able to invest in things going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Julie Hatt.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Firstly, I'd like to start by again thanking the officers who were involved in setting this budget. As a member of the Medium Term Financial Plan Working Group, he did give me an insight into the complications and the challenges which were faced, so we can't move away from those. Well, I must admit that this, reiterating what Councilor Charlotte Atkins has said, that this is very much a bare bones budget which is consumed by statutory services, hampered by the short term funding settlements from central government. And yes, central government do play a part when you're looking at the medium term financial plan over a number of years. If you're only going to get a one year settlement and that settlement is delivered just before Christmas as a poorly wrapped present, then it's not, not particularly good. The budget is impaired by the downgrading of the children's services. Obviously, I'm aware that there is a, a plan associated with that and we would, we would support the action which is taken to support that. But that is seen as a risk, you know, there's obviously potential issues and costs unknown which are associated with that. And of course, the budget is presented under the shadow of the eye watering figures associated with the direct schools grant statutory override. Again, you may say that's a central government issue and yes, central government need to do something about that. But the reality of it is, is that prudent councils like this council presents itself as would be on the serious threat of financial survival if that isn't resolved. The part of the budget which really worries me, and it does worry me about, sometimes we really need to invest in the issues which we've, which we've got now outside of those statutory services which I, which I mentioned. And I want to just alert people who haven't been up to date with today's news, is that the planet for the first time ever has exceeded one and a half degrees for the whole year. So we've gone past what was understood as, as the tipping point. Now, what's important is that obviously central government need to step up and there's issues there with the poor economic outlook with central government to release substantial funds which are, which are really desperately required. But as, as a council, we need to concentrate and we need to work not just on resolving that increase in climate change mitigation or piece of the world jigsaw, but also the adaptation strategies. And I'd like to have seen something which puts an investment on the, on the adaptation strategies to make sure that we can cope with the, with the short term issues which we could have, which if dealt with now, would obviously give long term savings. I am disappointed that as, as a relatively recent councillor, that the Divisional Highways Programme money, which is given to individual district councillors, is meagre to say the least. It's been reduced over the years, I understand, and obviously affected by inflation. That it actually doesn't really deliver anything for me as an individual, divisional councillor, I'm sure, for every district councillor around there. So what I would like to do, which would permit our group to support this budget, is to table an amendment to the budget. And the amendment is, and I'll, afraid I'll have to read it out because obviously it needs to be said specifically, that the council redistributes any council tax levy, for example, empty homes premium, second homes premiums imposed within their individual, their districts or boroughs proportionally to their members of the district and borough raising the levy as an enhancement to each of those members' divisional highways programme budget. So effectively, what I'm talking about is levies which are raised to resolve issues with housing problems within the districts and boroughs, which some or all districts and boroughs raise. Empty houses, empty houses strategy, second home strategy, that money is a windfall tax as regards to the county because it's designated to the county.
Sorry, let's finish the amendment and then you can say your point of order, I'm not going to do, but let's finish the amendment and, and then we'll have a brief conversation.
So therefore, that levy I'm asking for it to redistribute it as part of the DHP to the areas where the levy is raised, to allow us to do the jobs which as divisional councillors of all colours actually need to do for our community. So for that levy, it is signed by myself and seconded by Charlotte. Thank you.
Members, members, can I have your attention please? The monitoring officer is now looking at the amendment. So if we can just, you may sort of relatively quiet just for a minute or two while it's checked. I'll take the point of order.
Mr. Chairman, point of all, the majority of the proposals seem to relate to empty homes, which is a district and borough matter. And certainly doesn't allow the cabinet access to it on other sovereign councils.
No, no, we allowed you to speak and I'll stop the point of order, so please, please allow the point of order to speak, thank you. It's now on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The point, the point, the, the point I was making, Mr. Chairman, apologies for the microphone, is that empty homes and, and housing is a district and borough matter. And it is not on this council's ability, within this council's ability to impose its will or its thoughts on other sovereign councils. And so as a result, the amendment should fall. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We're just having some clarification now from the monitoring officer.
Thank you. The motion, the amendment to the motion reads that the council rediscutes and redistributes any council tax levy, open brackets, e.g. empty houses premium, second home premium, close brackets, imposed within their district or borough proportionally to their members as an enhancement to each of those members' divisional highways programme budget. The issue with it, and I've discussed this with the Director of Finance, is that it's talking about redistributing council tax levy for empty homes premium and second homes premium. That money does not come to the County Council, that comes to the districts and boroughs. And therefore, we don't have that money to redistribute. This is properly a motion for districts and boroughs to consider, not for the County Council.
Okay, taken on that, the amendment is, is withdrawn, it's thrown out, thank you. We now go back to talking about the budget and the MTFS as per the original agenda item. Thomas Luthru, Robert.
Thank you, Chairman. Make sure this is working first. First of all, wow, I can't stop that. I think that it's important to remember that this, I don't think we've mentioned so far that cost of living, most of my residents, I was having a, they had an interesting conversation with Angus, isn't it, who said to me, you're raising council tax by almost five percent. And reluctantly, I have to agree, and I'll tell you why. Because, and I do agree with some of the points of the opposition, that the government, there should be a more permanent solution towards social care and those matters, but this is not Parliament, nor is it United Nations for climate change. This is about our budgets. I'm hoping that, I'm also aware, I'm concerned about things like Ofsted, the report. I'm concerned about children's services and SEND, as someone who myself would raised it in an SEND background. So I'm very aware of the pressures there. But generally, I have to look around the West Midlands and I have to look at our counterparts and how they're doing and conclude that we have a, we have a budget here that is balanced, that is fair, that is reasonable, that is able to invest. I don't want to see the scenes that I see elsewhere here. For example, I know that addiction services on this boundary here, there's a very well known one I went to, and of course, Norrie Oliver, has just passed, has of course passed away recently, was on to me before her death about addiction service funding. I noticed it hasn't been cut, she was worried about it because of course, national concerns. And I also think about Burtwood residents, I think, I think the debate on social care funding will go on long after I'm gone. Because of course, national government is, and next year, but with rather point scoring, we have to think about the people who we have to, the reason we have to find a solution is so that we don't have to go every single time to the government for a settlement every single year and raising, and raising money every single year. Every single year I lived in Staffordshire, so far, we've seen to have raised a council tax. And every year since I've been a councillor, by a certain amount. I think that needs to change, but it's not going to happen overnight like some magic fairy tale. And that's why I feel that I must, I think I'll vote against this, if I vote against it, it'd be pointless to start, to go through. If I have the same, what it's, that's just like not doing anything. So I have to think about, and I think where my conscience goes. I also have to think, I myself am a student, of course, students don't pay council tax, a rare quirk in the system. So I have to consider how much, and when I look at how much we're getting, I compared Staffordshire County Council taxes to Warwickshire to our local partners recently. And it's true, the leader statement, who always says, always says in, following council, that we have one of the lowest council taxes in the country. But I think that we need to see more. I'd like to see, I'm hoping, this might be cheeky, that Chase Water is one of the country parks invested in because the one thing I would say is that I don't see anything about, I've never seen anything about Burtwood in these investments, that does concern me. And, but as a Burtwood point of view, I have to point out that what we need is a well sustainable system. When we look at our educational system, it is better than a highway system. There might be criticism, but one of the main things, the reason why I'm voting for this budget is the highways in my division has actually improved. Potholes have actually been fixed in my division recently, and that's because of Mr. Williams. But I do retain concerns about national issues. I think that that's a matter that's not this chamber though, and for that reason, I will be back in the council.
Councilor Mark Wilcox.
Good morning, Chairman, good morning colleagues. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, if I may, just talk through the mechanics of the MTFS cross party working group that I had shared. Our first scoping meeting was back in August of last year, where we examined the most up to date information from the Integrated Performance Report. Following that scoping session, a number of areas became the focus of the working group to which further information and evidence gathering was sought, which subsequently scheduled into a series of meetings with senior officers and Cabinet members during the autumn of last year. Mr. Chairman, we also took the opportunity to look back and review the outcomes and recommendations from the previous MTFS working group back in twenty two, twenty three, that were presented to Cabinet. The group concluded that the majority of these had been actioned. During our meetings, we tested and challenged a number of assumptions around particular areas of spend. These included children's transformation, SEND transport, education health and care plans, EHCP, and consideration should begin to preparing a Plan B should the assumptions made, together with the financial uncertainties, emerge in the coming years. In conclusion, Mr. Chairman, we submitted to Cabinet four recommendations which appear at Appendix fourteen of the papers you have this morning. We also suggested to Cabinet that close monitoring of performance would be key to ensuring the ongoing financial stability of this authority. We also noted that Staffordshire, along with many, many other local authorities up and down the country, face enormous significant financial challenge in setting a balanced budget. We, that's the cross party task group, are of the opinion that a robust and well structured financial approach has been put before this council today and that the MTFS produced for twenty four to twenty nine contains well thought out principles and assumptions. Can I finish, Mr. Chairman, by thanking all the members of the working group who met diligently and vigorously challenged both members and officers on the information they were provided with. And to both Rachel Spain, Chief Accountant Corporate Finance Unit, and Deb Breeden, our Security and Support Manager, for their support and help who kept us focused on the working hand. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Mois Sutherland.
Good morning all. Chairman, having just listened to councillor Ian Parry's delivered to us a balanced budget with no vital service cuts and an economic investment plan focused on keeping Staffordshire on track as, as a county to invest in, and this against the background of inflation, increased demand on key services and challenges that we will face going forward. As been said, we are all aware what's happening elsewhere in other authorities. So I welcome the fact that we, as a well run and well managed County Council, are able to deliver a balanced budget again this year. It's a tribute to the financial robustness. It's a tribute to the financial robustness of this council. Ian, on this occasion, boring is good. Chairman, if I may, we learnt last week that a long-serving senior financial officer is retiring. Rob Salmon's 38-year service with this council, all within the financial function. When you have a career like that, that's not just luck. That's the result of his dedication and commitment to getting the best out of our financial function over a number of years. This has given this council continuity, stability and robustness that we now enjoy today. On a personal level, as Cabinet Portfolio Lead, working with Rob and his team from 2017 through to 2021, I witnessed firsthand his leadership style. And what was striking was his calmness and his confident manner when we were going through choppy waters around that time. Particularly, and a particular example was during the start of Covid and getting financial support where it was needed in a fast and efficient manner. It was an outstanding performance by him and his team. In football speak, we talk of legends. Rob, you've earned that title and position within this council. Rob, you retire on a high and are well worthy of the plaudits coming your way between now and when you retire at the end of March. Wishing you a long and happy retirement.
Mr. Francis, don't miss an opportunity to be quiet. Thank you, councillor Sutherland, for that very warm statement about Rob Salmon. It was lovely. You can see the warmth towards him and the great job that robbed us. Moving on, councillor Gillian Pardsey.
Thank you, Chair. On page 78, there's mention of the Stafford History Centre, which is an ongoing project. And on January the 19th, a number of people were invited for a tour of the progress of this centre, just to plug the work that's being done here. There was quite an invitation list. I took two and a half hours off work, travelled from Stoke-on-Trent and, to my disappointment, apart from the Member for Culture, I was the only one who turned up for a tour. So just to say, this is a flagship project and I'd just like to emphasise it's going to be an amazing project, which I hope everyone will support.
Thank you, councillor Pardsey. councillor Paul Snape.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, council. Can I also echo what's been said about the budget? But Mr. Parry said really about waste, the way we've moved forward over the last, since we took over from Labour. We have lost jobs, but services, libraries, things we run, the services remained excellent. I sit on safeguarding, I know the work councillor Sutton has done with his team to ensure that our children in this county are safe. But can I remind everyone here, it doesn't matter where our funding comes from, whether it's local funding or it's national government funding, it's still the residents of this country and this county who are paying it. So asking if it would be sent from London as if it's going to save money for our residents, it's not going to save anything. Taxation has got to be increased to pay for what we want. And I think at the moment, with the budget we're putting out, it's an excellent settlement. And I would like to thank Mr. Salmon and his team, also our Cabinet. I know the hard work they've done over the last, well, since Christmas when we had the settlement. And it's great really that we're all here now, going through it. It's a balanced budget for five years, not just for this year or next year, for the whole period. It's a great achievement we've achieved and I think we should all be proud of our Cabinet and our leader for taking us that far. Thank you.
councillor Ferry Patkins.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I don't think this budget's boring, actually. It's really interesting when you dig into it, you know, and for the benefit of anybody who's listening on the web, there's 110 pages for us to wade through. And I found out something in it, I found out what SONIA actually stands for, which is the Standing Overnight Index Average, which has taken over from LIBOR and Libor. But there's some really interesting stuff in the pages. But underpinning it, all of it, are two or three really sound things, which, one of them, you know, I have to say, Mr. Yates, we're all in this together. And your motion would have put one against the other because some people may have had more second homes in than others and, you know. So it would have been, well, I've got more than you. We're all in this together. And there's an appropriate decision taken at an appropriate level with the appropriate involvement. That's why we're a county council. And it's all right saying that government should give us more money to perform the services that we want. But as Charlotte Atkins said, successive governments, both Labour and Conservative and Coalition, so all political parties are in this, have not taken the decisions about how to fund social care. Dillnot brought that forward 12, 15 years ago and there has to be a period of change. Some have embarked on the journey, some are about to embark on the journey and some have time after 40 to save money in an insurance system to take care of their lives in the future. Nobody has a desire to end up in a residential care home. But it is our duty to make sure that those who do fall within our care are looked after properly. And this budget does that. But also, underpinning it all, and it's a Staffordshire thing, and that's why we're different to other councils. Personal responsibility. Personal responsibility. Not expecting what the government can do for you, but what you can do for your country, your county, your community. So that we, as a county council, can help those who really do need our help. That's what this county council is about. And we don't do it as individuals, we're councillors. We're the representatives of the shareholders of the county, the electorate and the people who live here. It's our staff who perform the tasks that we ask them to do. And this budget, over the next five years, gives them the funding to do the jobs that we ask them to do on our behalf. That's why this isn't boring, Chairman. This is vital for our county, our residents, for the next five years. And I'd just like to add my thanks to Rob. He's not boring. He's actually quite an interesting guy. I'm looking at him now, smiling. And, you know, I wish in future, because I know he wants to do other things, like we all do. And, you know, and sometimes boring is really interesting, you know. I'm sitting in front of the guy who's chairman of the Pension Committee, so I have to know that. It's not a curse, it's really interesting. So I'm going to fully support the budget and I'm also pleased to hear that the opposition are supporting it as well. That's what I've heard. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Parry, you are trending on the word boring, aren't you? Well done for bringing that subject up. councillor Saeed Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would like to also thank the finance team for their hard work and also extend my tribute to the Cabinet member for giving us this report in advance so that we can have a chance to look into it. Mr. Chairman, may I just also seek the attentions to the Cabinet members? And especially on the page 90, paragraph 29. If I may seek the attentions there, we can see the difference between the internal borrowing from 2023 and 2024 is huge, about 66.4 million pounds. And similarly, the gap between the 2023 and 2024 would be nearly 100% increase of internal borrowing. So my concern, which is set out, the risk factor in the page, this factor set out in the page of 93 and paragraph 39, shows, so I would be grateful that on his budget response can set out and explain what are the risk factors, especially the interest rates and also the market risk factor as well. And on the same note, Mr. Chairman, I would like to seek another attention in the paragraph 105 in page 117. I fully support the need of the training, especially for our members and myself as well. There is always room to learn, all this economic jargon. So it has been set out that there is a need. So I would be grateful if you can clearly indicate what's the plan for the training need set out, which is in paragraph 105. And finally, if I can recall, when our first interactions with our new chief executive officers. No matter what you do, you can have millions of pounds, but you have to keep your eyes always open. Mr. Chairman, the reason I'm bringing this one forward, our leader very rightly pointed out section 114. What is section 114? One in five councillors facing possible bankruptcy. I'm not pointing out Staffordshire County Council, but if you keep our eyes open and if you can scrutinise properly, we might avoid it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I'd love to pay my tributes to Rob as well, even though I have called him many names, especially around Christmas, going out with my begging bowl, he's always been what I would call the most professional auditor and administrator I've ever met and I wish him well with his future. I can't let it go that the fact that it started from the opposition members, that they were talking about funding for green and ecological matters when their leader has just literally completely U-turned today and said they're not going to be spending that sort of money themselves. Quite a shock, but when he then started talking about divisional highways programmes and the money that we get, that money is there for the member to use with their community, after liaising with their community, after talking with their community and looking at what the community actually wants and looking at realistic proposals. That also means going out to parish councils, that also means going out to businesses and getting extra funding to make sure that you can get what you need. It's not for this council to just give lots of money to each individual councillor so they can spend money to make themselves look good. That's not what it's all about. It's actually for looking after our local community. Now, when I do it, I go out to businesses, I go to parish councils, that's what other members should be doing and looking at. And also working with the districts and boroughs. And in fact, South Staffordshire Council, which I'm also a member of, are actually putting on even more street scene teams to help advance and look after our area even better. So again, it's not for us. But it was a bit strange as well that Mr. Yates has also forgotten the pothole fund that he had this year. And I think every member has used that pothole fund very, very well and it's actually still going on. And we continue to mend potholes right the way through the winter. Yes, we are doing some holiday repairs in certain areas because of the weather, but we are actually repairing more than ever, over 16,000 defects last year. 16,000, that's a lot of defects when we're looking at it in a period of normally between March and October. That is a huge amount of work. So actually, when we're talking about local members and the funds that they get, we get quite a lot. And unfortunately, when it comes to certain members, they want to spend a lot of money on one particular job or spend four years' worth of money on one particular set of jobs, which has happened in the past. And actually, that's what it's there for, is it? It's there to do small, individual things for local communities. That's why it's called the Divisional, the DHP. And that's what it's for. And unfortunately, that's what it needs to be used for. Finally, can I just say, I really want to applaud both councillor Parry and Mr. Salmon on this budget. This is a five-year balanced budget. The opposition members have said quite clearly about the fact that we've got different authorities going into administration. This has got five years' plan to make sure it doesn't do that. That's how good they are. That's how hard they've worked. And I know that I will always go to Mr. Parry and ask for more money for highways and I always will. That's part of my role. But they look at it in a most measured and admirable way and this is a budget that we, as a whole, should be commending and making sure that we give that to our residents. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
councillor Mark Deville.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, thank you very much. I think councillor Sutherland absolutely nailed it, didn't he, Chairman, earlier? And I think, Mike, your words were so true about Rob Salmon. In fact, I think councillor Sutherland, you've elevated Rob Salmon now alongside legends like Alan Hudson and Gordon Banks locally. What more can we say, Rob? And I'm sure you'd enjoy that, but thank you. Thank you for the work that you've done. As an engineer, I'd say that Rob Salmon has been successful in the role that he's done, the important role that he's done, because he knows the nuts and bolts around this council. He knows all the corners, he knows the work that goes on and he knows in detail the services that we deliver. And I think that is one of the reasons why Rob has been successful indeed, is successful with Mr. Parry in delivering this budget today. And I'm so pleased that councillor Sutton and other members have brought this discussion back to Staffordshire, because that's what Staffordshire people want to hear. They don't want to hear issues that are national, they hear enough of that every time they turn the news on. Staffordshire people want to hear about issues in Staffordshire and how Staffordshire County Council and other councils are dealing with those issues. And Chairman, this is a prudent, a careful and a balanced budget for Staffordshire. It's an ambitious budget for Staffordshire. And councillor Parry clearly indicated that we will continue to improve the lives of families across Staffordshire. It's an exciting budget and councillor Luffborough Road, you'll be delighted to know that within that budget we do have plans for Chase Water Country Park, other country parks, other exciting projects across Staffordshire. And finally, Mr. Chairman, Paul Snape's dead right. We should be proud of this budget as members of Staffordshire County Council. We all own this budget, not just the Cabinet, not just the leader, not just you, Chairman. We all own this budget. And you're right, Mr. Snape, we should damn well be proud of this budget and the challenging times that we faced, the challenging times that we face in the future to present a budget as balanced and as strategic and as ongoing sustainable budget such as this. You're right, Paul. We should be proud and we are proud. And I'm proud and delighted to support this budget, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have no further member speakers on this. I'm going to call councillor Alan White, who reserved his right to speak, and then councillor Parry, straight after that, who will give a summary if he wants to. councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning. And news, everyone, Rob's not dead. He's not going yet and he's back in March, so save your tributes for then, because we've got to do it all again. But what you don't know is that Rob can turn base metals into gold amongst his other talents. That's the reason why we've got a balanced budget. I want to deal with a few of the issues that were raised during the course of the debate. First of all, I can deal with a few of them really rather succinctly. It was said that pressures can't be discounted. They've not been. It was said that a good budget must not be driven by short-term fixes. It isn't. It was said that it was a bare-bones budget. Why? Because it rhymes? It's not a bare-bones budget. It's a proper budget, it balances over a five-year period and it's got exciting things in there that people can actually hang their hat on and say, this is the reason why we chose these people to run our administration. This is the reason why we chose these people to run our county. But it is important to note that we are here today able to present this balanced budget, not just because of something that's appeared out of thin air, but because of difficult decisions that have been taken over many years. It is often said we stand on the shoulders of those that came before us and in this case, we do. We have taken difficult decisions over the years and as a health and care portfolio holder, I've taken a large number of those difficult decisions over the years. But that's allowed us to get a balanced budget over the five-year period. Now, it's important that when somebody stands up and actually cites an awful lot of criticism about central government, that they're able to also refer to the alternative that's available. And one of the things we haven't heard from the Labour Party nationally is what the alternative is. The statutory override is a problem, they say. Okay, what's your alternative? Social services and the funding of social services is a problem. Okay. Okay, what's your alternative? How's it going to get funded? All these things require alternative solutions for people to choose, and that's the one thing that's missing, an alternative solution to choose. And what we've got here is something that we've put together over a long period of time, which allows us to present to the public of Staffordshire something that's clearly thought through. I don't think it's boring, and it's got lots of exciting opportunities in it. As far as the one in five local authorities that report that they are going to go bust, Staffordshire is not one of them. Okay, let's be quite clear about that. Staffordshire's not one of them because of those difficult decisions that we've taken previously. Lobbying has worked. We've been talking to our Members of Parliament for months and maybe years now about the additional money that we need to help with adult social care. And what happened last week, or the week before, I can't quite recall, six hundred million pounds of additional funding came through for adult social services, which Rob, his team and Ian will be working through in the next couple of weeks. There are some things that were referred to, which I just think, for example, the challenge of increasing council tax by four point nine nine percent, which I wanted to just dwell on for a moment. We never raise council tax lightly. We always do so with a heavy heart, knowing that we have to fund services, vital services that people need. We make sure that every single pound that we take from people's pockets is wisely spent on efficiently delivered services. It is those councils that haven't taken those decisions, those councils that fritter money away, that then have to say to government, I need to put up council tax by even more than four point nine nine percent. For those that read the news, you'll have realised that Birmingham City Council has got the ability to now increase council tax by ten percent. So those people who are confronted by a cost of living challenge, living in Birmingham City, those people who need services in Birmingham City are the ones who are going to get hit by the failure of Birmingham City Council to make the decisions that they should have made many years ago. This is a good budget, but we are having to take money out of people's pockets, and we do so with a heavy heart. With that, Mr Chairman, I second this budget.
Councillor Ian Parry.
Thank you, Chairman. Our duty this morning is for this council to agree its budget. That's one of our reserved matters as this council, that's our duty. And in order for us to do that, we have to make some decisions about how you want to allocate funding for this council and allocate funding to your priorities, to your service delivery, to your investments, to your infrastructure. Those are strategic decisions that only this council can make, officers cannot make those. We decide those things, we decide the strategy and the policy of this council. And on the advice of this Cabinet, we recommend that to this council for you to approve. So this is not the officer's budget, folks, it's your budget. We have the best advice we could possibly get to make those strategic decisions. We don't make them in isolation, we're not qualified to do so. We need professional advice, and we have the best in Rob Salmon and his team, in the chief executive and his team, and with my Cabinet colleagues. Collectively, together, we put our budget to this council. And then we have an amendment, then we have an amendment to this budget, having supported the budget itself, but we have a caveat. And the caveat is completely and utterly technically wrong. I mean, I hold my head in my hands metaphorically, thinking, these people, and the Leader signed it, seconded it, the opposition members presumably have aspirations at some point in the future. Heaven forbid, folks, do you know what you're getting? Do you know who's proposing this stuff? People who don't understand the very basics of local government finance. Gosh, there's a six hundred odd million pound budget to spend, and we're nickel and diming it with somebody else's money, with some other council's money. Honestly, where is the logic in this, Chairman? Where is the logic? I really do not know.
I'll take the point of order, councillor Parry.
Could you tell me which point of order in the standing orders?
I'm waiting for the point of order, councillor Parry.
Which standing order, please, Chairman? Which standing order are we referring to?
Your comment is factually incorrect.
Which standing order is that?
I'll change it to a point of clarification.
Clarification?
Because your comment is factually incorrect, because I've got to respond to my legal officer at Staffordshire Mollins District Council.
Oh, well, that's it then.
I'll take this. You should have, I'll take this, councillor Parry, just give us a second. The reality is, you should have consulted with the legal executive of this council and not, and that's as simple as that. So I'm not going to take the point of order or the point of clarification. Councillor Parry.
With due respect, Chair, to the officers of the Staffordshire Mollins, which I'm sure are acting in the best interest, I guess it depends on what question you asked, to what advice you got back. But maybe, maybe we need to think a bit more and research a bit harder before we bring stuff to this chamber, because this is serious stuff here. We're talking about serious things. We're talking about children in our care, we're talking about adults that need support, we're talking about infrastructure, economy, our jobs, et cetera. We need to get this right. And we don't need to spend our time, do we, in talking about what central government can and can't do? Because, you know, some of this stuff has been hanging around for a long time, and we'll see, you know, what happens in the future. I'm really sorry about the technical question, and yeah, I'll come back to you, because it was a bit techie, and I was having difficulty working out which parts of the report, so I'm not fending it. And if you want to ask me a public question in the future, but I will come back to you to give you a more robust and comprehensive answer. Thank you, colleagues, for your support this morning. I hope we can approve this budget. It is, in my experience as a finance portfolio over quite a number of years now in the council, I think, put in probably the best financial stability state that we've been in for some time. We've been on a journey, as I say, one hundred and thirty-seven million pounds just over the seven years, it's a lot more if you go back further, to get this council to a place where it is today. And I think that's a stable place that people can have confidence and trust that we will deliver more in the future.
Thank you, councillor Parry. I will now ask the chief executive to take a name vote on the recommendations before the council. I would once again remind members that under section one oh six of the Local Government Finance Act nineteen ninety-two, if they are two months or more in arrears with the council tax, it is an offence for them to vote on the budget. Members are also required to disclose at the meeting the fact that this section applies to them. Chief Executive.
Chair, thank you, councillors. I'll call your name, hopefully in alphabetical order. When I do, if you could indicate either for or against the motion, that'd be appreciated. So going down the list, councillor Abrams. Councillor Afso. Councillor Charlotte Atkins. Councillor Philip Atkins. Councillor Clements. Councillor Cox. Councillor Davies. Councillor Deville. Councillor Eglund. Councillor Edula. Councillor Flunder. Councillor Francis. Councillor Grace Rex. Councillor Hayden. Councillor Heath. Councillor Hewitt. Councillor Hudd. Councillor Hudd? Thank you. There's an echo. Councillor Huckfield. Councillor Hudson. Councillor Hussein. Councillor Hutton. Councillor Jessel. Councillor Chris Konjic. Councillor Loughborough Rudd. Councillor McMann. Councillor Northcott. Councillor Pardesi. Councillor Ian Parry. Councillor Cath Perry. Councillor Pert. Councillor Peters. Councillor Price. Councillor Pritchard. Councillor Sylvester Hall. Councillor Smith. Councillor Snape. Councillor Spencer. Councillor Sutherland. Councillor Sutton. Councillor Sweeney. Councillor Tag. Councillor Thompson. Councillor Trowbridge. Councillor Waring. Councillor Alan White. Councillor Philip White. Councillor Wilcox. Councillor Wowman. Councillor Bernard Williams. Councillor David Williams. Councillor Wilson. Councillor Winnington. Councillor Worthington. Councillor Yates. And I don't believe I've missed anybody out, but if anybody could indicate. Thank you.
And that's carried. All right, moving on to item six, which is a statement to the Leader of the Council. Councillor Alan White, will you move consideration of the statement, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I move consideration of the Leader's statement.
Just to confirm, councillor Alan White, there is an addendum?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I move the addendum to the Leader's statement, which is the electoral review of Staffordshire County Council, further limited draft recommendations, particularly regarding the district of Lichfield. The recommendation of that addendum to the Leader's statement is that the Director for Corporate Services in consultation with county councillors from Lichfield as a collective are given delegated authority to respond to the consultation on behalf of Staffordshire County Council. Mr Chairman, I so move.
Thank you. I have no speakers on the addendum, so we move on to item one on the statement, the lead of the statements, which is Older People Adult Social Care Commissioning Strategy for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine. I'll call that again. Councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This strategy relies very heavily on work within the community, supporting elderly people to stay independent at home. But how are we going to attract the care staff to fill the posts which are already vacant without a significant increase in pay for them? Because we all know, don't we, that as soon as a supermarket opens up in a nearby area, that we lose a lot of care workers to working in a supermarket because they actually pay more money. And it worries me that particularly given that we're not able to rely on many foreign workers anymore, that we have an ambitious programme here to support people in the community, but not without the number of staff that we need to fill those particular posts. And also looking at the report, I see that the County Council is investing in creating two new homes in the south of the county. Is the County Council also considering the development of a new care home in the north of the county?
I have no further speakers. Councillor Jessel, do you want to come in on this one?
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. And thank you very much for the question. In terms of, and I think you're referring to care in people's homes, home care, there have been in the past some difficulties, particularly during the Covid period. But I'm very pleased to say that with the work that we've been doing as a county council, paying home care providers as much as we can afford, recognising they've got cost of living pressures, fuel, transport costs, that actually now that market has improved significantly. And we are able, through our dynamic purchasing system, to be able to find packages of care for people in a very quick period of time. As you know, it's been one of the themes that I've been promoting, that we need to improve the status of people who work in the care industry. They really felt the underdog during Covid. NHS was put on a pedestal, but those who kept working diligently and in a most conscientious way in the caring industry, both in care homes and providing home care, kept going. We have done that. We're looking at finding career routes for them, extra training packages and that kind of support. This is in response to the feedback we've had from people working in that industry. So I think a combination of valuing people who work in this industry, bearing in mind people work, as we, you know, everybody does, to earn a living, but actually valuing the service that they give. So I am pleased to say that it's a far healthier market than it was. I think in terms of, part of this strategy is providing people with information, information about equipment that they can have, that they can purchase, some of it is quite simple, quite low-cost equipment, to enable people to live independently within their own home, which there's been comments made, I think, by councillor Atkins. Nobody wants to really end up in a care home. So anything we can do to encourage people to look after their health, remain active physically and mentally as long as possible, the support in their own home, the better. I have stood in this council chamber before and said, we can't keep doing things in the same old way and expect a different result. There are financial pressures, but I think as a society, we recognise that we have a personal responsibility to look after our health, keep active, and therefore we live a more fulfilling life. It isn't about the years you live, it's the quality. So I think I can understand the concerns, it has been a difficult market, it has improved significantly, but there is more work to do to support that industry, that we can provide those packages of care within the short time scales that we would wish. In terms of, and there will be a report coming to Cabinet, probably late spring, early summer, on the business case for potentially two new nursing homes. They will be homes that will be focusing on providing the more specialist care for those with dementia. So it will be not just a care home, it will be care home and nursing home. I'm not going to preempt what those business cases are, as you will appreciate, there's the cost of the building, the cost of running the care. And I think it will be for that Cabinet meeting to decide whether to proceed with those two homes, and then in terms of where we go from there. It's a challenging market, there is a gap in the market, and this council has always had a policy of where there is market failure, we will intervene. And that's what this programme will be about. But I wouldn't wish to preempt any decision of any future Cabinet. Thank you, Chairman.
Moving on to item two on the Leader's statement, which is Staffordshire Means Back to Business. Councillor Keith Flunder.
Thank you, Chair. My comments are related to the last paragraph. I didn't see many other people there, but I did attend the conference a few weeks back that was held at Alton Towers, just to tell everyone here today that there were well over a hundred businesses represented. It was focused particularly on the tourism and everything else. And it was a great legacy that had come from the previous administration in the Mollins, where we were putting lots of funding and investment into where we can go in the future within tourism. I'd like to say and congratulate the officers of the county who worked very hard and diligently to put this together. And I must say, the workshops and everything else were very good and well-attended. And I must congratulate everyone involved in doing that. And it's great to see, after talking about the budget, the fact that we are looking at investment, we are looking at investment within the different districts as well and working with them. And I do hope that we can continue this going forward. It was a great event, and I'd like to congratulate everyone involved with it. Thank you very much. And I do hope that we can continue this going forward. It was a great event and I'd like to congratulate everyone involved with it. Thank you very much.
Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And what I will say is that every day appears to be a school day. I'm not sure whether it's a school day for me or whether it's a school day for the wider chamber. Because certainly what's important with being back to business, and certainly in Staffordshire Morelands, we are very short of small business units to drive the economy forward. We're very aware that we have an aging profile in the Staffordshire Morelands and it's important that we have, that we provide opportunities for business to drive forward. I have, since the budget debate, received clarification from our legal office, which is very important.
But we've done all that, and we genuinely done all that. We've now moved on to the leader's statement.
Yeah, would you bear with us?
And I'll happily, we'll talk in my office afterwards. But if it's about the leader's statement, it's about back to business. If you go back to that, then we're not going to take it. We have done all that and we did it extensively. I allowed you to speak. I dismissed the point of order. I couldn't have been fairer. I think as a chairman, I'm very fair. So we've done all that. So I don't want clarification from that. We want to talk about item two on the leader's statement, and that's what we're talking about now.
Yes. Yes, well, I'm pleased to report that we can retain our levies next year because the previous administration inadvertently obviously sent them to the county council. And we will be using that to drive economic growth in the Staffordshire Morelands. And I would look to the Staffordshire County Council to actually support the Staffordshire Morelands in those aims to provide that economic growth, which we so sorely need to stop the hemorrhaging of young talent into other areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is really a good piece, actually. The first bullet point in the paper points out that our claimant count continues to be one of the lowest in the West Midlands. But I think the buried in the middle of the third bullet point is a fact that I was really pleased to see. Over the last year, the average earnings of our residents have increased by over 12% compared to just 5% across the West Midlands region and England as a whole. The average weekly earnings of our residents are now the same as the national average, the first time that this has ever been the case. Well, I know a lot of you weren't here 20, 30 years ago, but 20 years ago, Staffordshire was the poorest performing subregion of the poorest performing region in the country. That's why we had most European regional development funding. Think about that. The average wage in this county then was about 70, 75% of the national average. It's increased by a third since 2009, a third. I know a lot of people are struggling, but at least they've got money in the pockets from jobs to try and look after their families and their loved ones. And the rest of the paragraphs that we've got in front of us point out the efforts that we're still continuing to do to provide the opportunities for businesses to develop, be innovative, thrive and carry on. I know the largest employer in my patch, my division, who employs many across this county, has plans to double their production over the next four to five years. They are a global company. They're not a UK solely company. I'm watching people go to work every day and thriving, learning new skills, getting on in life, being able to look after their families, buy a home. So we've really come on well. And yes, there will be little grats about we need some small business units in certain areas of the county. And yes, we'll be wanting things like that. And also picking up what Charlotte said in the last paragraph about people going to supermarkets. As a farmer, I will tell you, they're having far too much of the profits of the production of food and ending up on your plate. The shareholders have something to answer for. In this country, we'll do it a different way. But on the continent, you'd be having demonstrations blocking off places to supermarkets. Brussels had empty shelves last week. They're demonstrating on the Polish borders. We don't have that here. You just get on with the jobs, the bad weather, work hard and try and keep as much in your pocket as possibly can. And that's why our council tax is one of the lowest in the country. But that fact buried in the middle of the third bullet point is something that this county should be proud of. It's still growing. We're attracting businesses that will give better jobs. So instead of moaning about it, encourage people to get skills at the colleges and universities within our borders and then work within our borders. For too many years, people were getting qualifications here and going elsewhere. Now they have the opportunity to work in this county and earn a decent wage.
Councillor David Smith.
Chairman, there's much rejoicing in my division. Lichfield District Council have now approved the application at Lichfield South for 30 EV charging points, 10 acres of new high-tech manufacturing, which will bring high value jobs to the division. And everything from that point of view is going very, very well. But there is no success without some flies in the ointment. I am staggered that the connection which is being proposed by the National Grid to connect 30 EV points to the National Grid, they are wanting three million pounds, three million pounds to connect 30 15 amp plugs or not much more. I find that staggering. I also, Chairman, found it disappointing that to be able to get the planning application through, we had to get the developer to contribute £100,000 to move two bus stops, one of which I don't think needed moving. So yes, we're moving forward. Yes, it's exciting, but not without some problems. Chairman, I think this is something that is the most exciting new development in the county. And I hope that the county will go forward in promoting this as a tremendous opportunity and it's my division. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Philip White.
Morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
So I resisted the temptation to speak in the budget debate because I thought it might be more prescient to talk about some of the outputs of the hard work that we carry out over many years in economic development in this county, which is really well illustrated in this statement. So low unemployment, much lower than the regional, massively lower than the regional and much lower than the national average. We have jobs aplenty in Staffordshire, highly skilled and highly paid. And the point that councillor Atkins made about that journey we've gone on during the years that we've been running this council, where we've gone from a low wage and low productivity economy to now outstripping earnings growth by way more than double the national average last year. So low unemployment, high wage, green investment, so businesses investing in decarbonising in Staffordshire, and this council helping businesses to understand how they can do that effectively. And national recognition for our 1.8 billion pound tourism sector, one of the all too often unsung star performers in our economy here in Staffordshire. All there in this statement today. And that's what you get for that money that we take from all of us as taxpayers. And take it with due seriousness and spend it really carefully on things like this, outputs that benefit our residents. We've much more to come. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further speakers. So moving on to item three on the leader's statement, which is carbon sequestration and woodland creation. Councillor David Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. I commend the report. I have no problems with that. But I think that we need to be looking forward to a much, much wider plan for this county. We make no mention of hedgerows. Hedgerows provide a faster and better way of looking at absorbing carbon than trees do. Trees are a very, very long programme before they start to have any real impact on what we're doing. Hedges start to work for us as of now. We have so many gaps in our hedgerows that we have an opportunity to do low cost maintenance to those hedgerows in conjunction with the farmers and the industry in general. Chairman, I feel also that as a county, we have an opportunity to be able to look at a much, much wider plan. We've done a great job as far as the work of this council's own buildings and services are concerned. But we look at a million new trees. In my division alone, I've got half a million new trees that have gone in. That's an opportunity, Chairman, for us to be able to look at the whole of the county and start to shout about the tremendous opportunities that there are and the tremendous work which is going on. We need, Chairman, to be able to now address climate change in a much more aggressive way. And I look forward to this council aggressively looking at climate change and coming up with a very, very clear future strategy. Chairman, I apologise. I think that I bang on about this at every council meeting, but we don't seem to be listened to as members. And I look forward to a change. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I applaud the comments which councillor Smith has just said, certainly with regard to hedgerow creation. Because hedgerows not just impact on carbon sequestration, but the impact on biodiversity and also the impact on the adaptation strategy, because they act as absolutely fantastic filters to stop debris from swooshing straight onto the road network and blocking gullies and causing problems like that. One thing which I want to ask specifically aimed at the Cabinet members is that I've seen that there is a competition launched last week on new forest creation with £10 million available. I don't like the word competition, to be honest, because it means that in a lot of areas, offices would be putting an awful lot of work into entering a competition with very little prospect of winning it, which is obviously a waste of resource. But it does bring on to wider pointers, A, are we aware of that competition for the creation of a new forest? There's £10 million worth of funding, which would go certainly a long way. And secondly, which other sort of grants and agencies are we engaged with at the moment to actually increase our tree cover and get the ability to get in grants or get in actual trees issued to us? So we can extend certainly the National Forest into Staffordshire. And potentially as well, look at some of the really uneconomically farmable land within our county farms. I'd like to see those areas planted up, both with hedgerows and trees, to act as an exemplar for the rest of the farming community which we've got. Because I think it is always the council's responsibility to lead by example, and that would be a fantastic way of showing leadership. I'm not talking productive land, I'm talking land which isn't economically farmable. What can we do there with regards to carbon sequestration and biodiversity? And how that can act as a beacon for the vast number of farms which we've got across the county. Thank you.
Councillor Samantha Thompson.
Thank you. Good morning or afternoon, sorry. Good morning. I'd just like to say thank you to David for his comments and Nigel, who were both on the working group at the time. So we have had that opportunity to bring those thoughts to the working group. However, I do feel that this is a positive step towards climate change. I do feel that with Staffordshire County Council and what we're looking at to achieving for 2050, that this working group, cross-party, was, is a positive step. And I'd just like to say thank you to everybody who worked hard in that group and put their passion in, because that's what it was. It was a passionate group. We all put our thoughts in, we all did our discussion. One of the members said he was very, very proud of this report going through Democratic Services, they work so hard. And I would just like to say thank you for it to actually come to this meeting. It got to Cabinet, which is something I believe hasn't happened very often. So I would just like to say thank you to you all for reading it and taking the time out. So thank you.
Councillor John Francis.
Thank you, Chairman. Planting trees is an absolutely fantastic way to alleviate the carbon problem. And in my particular division, where I live, when I was chairman of Bauxley's Parish Council, one of the things we did was when we had a new small mini housing estate built, I managed to get the developer to give us some land, which was then developed into what they call the copies, which is a buffer zone between the housing estate and the farmland behind it. It's absolutely fantastic. It's good for wildlife. It's got deer runs in. It's got a mix of deciduous trees. And the problem with it is, and there is a problem, is the management of it. I managed to get £52,000 off the developer, I'm going back 22 years now, £52,000 off the developer for the management of the copies. That was very soon swallowed up by the management of it. The trees are now 20 to 30 foot high. There's been a lot of self settings, sycamores and things like that. So you have to take the management of these things responsibly. And unfortunately, it costs money. So I do urge caution on some of these projects because somebody, somewhere, is going to pick the tab up for managing these assets. And they're an asset or a liability. They're a bit of both. It's a 50 50. So apart from it being an absolutely fantastic way of sequestering carbon and for the good of communities, because they are brilliant initiatives, I would urge a caution of who's going to manage them, how much is it going to cost and where's the money coming from. Thank you, Chairman.
Still have quite a number of speakers on this item. Councillor Mark Winnington.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Before I say anything, can I just reiterate my interest in countryside stewardship scheme, sustainable farming initiative, and also I'm a grower of energy crops. Trees are very good. We all seem to think that trees are the only answer. But there's a lot more going on, as any farmers in the room will know. We are being helped along the way in terms of carbon sequestration. One of the most important things we've got to look at is actually the soil, not what grows on it. It's the soil itself and whatever lives in the soil is incredibly important. Just a couple of points really, and John's bang on the money. Some of these schemes, the woodland trees in particular, they tie your farm up for 150 years. So it's not about today, it's about your children's, children's, children's. And what sounds a lot of money, I mean, a tractor was £1,000 20 years ago, they're now £40,000. So we've got to really be careful with that bit of it. As John said, who's going to pay for it? If we put them in the wrong place, those trees have got to be looked at and nurtured for the next 50 years. And my final point to members really, and it was mentioned in the last item, is electricity. Now, David said about a 15 amp plug. If you've got a Tesla or something that's a high fast charger, it's three phase. Now, if the infrastructure's not there, two things happen. We don't get the ability to put charging points in because there's no infrastructure. And the other problem is that if we want to do something like power generation in the future in terms of onshore wind or in terms of solar, we are putting that, those planning applications in the wrong places, just so that it'll fit the infrastructure from the big power generators. We've got to get, make, have some sort of an, I'm sure there is some coordination, but we need the electricity infrastructure, the right amount in the right place. It's no good us saying we're going to do this, this and this, and then when you speak to the electricity companies, National Power, whatever they call themselves now, they say, oh, very good, but we've got no say, oh, very good, but we've got no capacity. This is important, it's something that we've really got to get a handle on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I've got to applaud councillor Smith to be able to plant 50,000 trees over the last, per year, for the last 10 years, it's no mean feat and well done to you. When it comes to the fact about the hedge rows, the hedge rows are owned by farmers, they go on farmers' land and they maintain them. So we applaud the fact that there are some hedge rows, but obviously it is farmers' land and they look after those hedge rows. But we have not been, even with highways, we've not been sitting on our laurels, so to speak, although that is also a very good plant for sequestration of carbon. We've looked at our, as we call them, hairy bush, which is a type of cotoniasta, and different types of plants that we will be able to use on our verges and in our areas, that actually take in a lot, quite a lot of carbon and deposit within the soil. So we actually already started some trials, that along with wilding of areas and some of these English wildflower seeds that we're now going to use. Beacon side is the perfect example where we're trialling that one. So we are looking at what we can do from a highways point of view. But when it's all, Mr. Francis has got it very right there. So we have over a million trees on highways, and we have to have those inspected on a regular basis on safety grounds. The more trees we put around those areas and the different types of trees we put on areas, we are going to also have to have those inspected and the damage that they do both to pathways and the damage they do to roads. So I think it's very important that we plant in the right places, the right types of plant and the right areas that we use it. And also then we have to incorporate that into our maintenance schemes, and that's extremely important. So when we go to different places and you've seen some of the wildflower areas, in the winter, they don't look particularly appetising. They're very nice in the summer with all the flowers, but in the winter they look quite a messy place. But they are quite easy to maintain with a mulching over and to put in, so they're very good. But it is part of the thing that we will get complaints about how things look. And as it comes to other pathways and other areas, I think what we're trying to do now is make sure that we can open our areas so people can use them, they can look at that, and we can use our community groups and our community contacts to help maintain these areas, including rights away areas that we know that we do around our area. So I applaud people's ambitions to want to plant everywhere, but actually we need to look at it in the most appropriate manner so that we don't overtake what our funds are, but also make sure that we do the right thing for the right place. Thank you.
councillor Jill Heath.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yes, just like to reiterate that we mustn't plant these trees on good agricultural land. We need our agricultural land to feed the nation. And I was very disturbed, and councillor Yates said, look at the county farms. Farming is a very expensive industry to get into unless farmers are lucky enough to have succession and get onto the ladder, it is a very difficult career. And I sit on the county farms panel to see the passion that these young people have when they apply for the county farms. And it's not land that needs trees on it, it's land that has milk cows, that has sheep, that grows crops. We need to save the county farms.
councillor Danny Huckfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I just say first of all, Happy New Year to you? I've noticed nobody else has done that, I don't worry, got someone against you or what, but you're all very happy.
councillor Huckfield, I appreciate your consent, but it is February, so we're going to just sort of let everybody off just for today. Over to you, councillor Huckfield.
Very funny feeling, me and you might get on. Can I just say, on this tree planting, do we know how many trees have been planted up to yet? That's the big question, because this has been going on now for quite a few years, right, when councillors could go out and get people to plant trees or buy the trees or whatever, right, as a community project. So I was just wondering how many trees have been planted, I wonder if anybody knows. I'm a big lover of the trees, right? Unless there's a need to fetch a tree down, they shouldn't fetch it down. And I'll argue to keep a tree, whether it's got a probation order on it or what, but at the end of the day, trees are beautiful, and the more trees you can plant, the better, right? And if you can find some land within our area of Newcastle, I'm glad councillor Tag's sitting there listening, right, is plant as many trees as you possibly can, because we need it, right? Because within Newcastle, the atmosphere is not very good. My wife spent basically half her time at Christmas in hospital. Backwards and forwards we were going, couldn't get a breath. And this is contamination of the air that we breathe in. And if you plant more trees than that Alps, I'm not saying it's going to solve the problem, but if you plant more trees than that Alps, there'd be a lot of people that'd be thankful, because there seems to be a lot of people within my area that are suffering with the chest problems, breathing problems. My wife couldn't get a breath. She was gasping like mad, rushed to the A and E, right, serious problem, and it worried me to death. And it makes me more and more determined, right, to try to get, not just the potholes that we've got done, but to try to get the atmosphere cleared up better than what it is at this moment in time. And I'll argue, Mr. Chairman, with anybody on the situation that affects my area, no matter who it is, because it's very, very serious. And we talk about what happened with the post office, right? The same thing will happen with my area in the border of Newcastle, right, in years to come, right? And there'll be massive, and I mean massive, compensations they'll have to pay out. Take note. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Huckfield. I'm sure we all share that, please send on our very best regards to your wife, and we hope she feels better soon. councillor Philip Atkins.
I'd like to thank Sam for the work she's done on this working group, because I think it's actually something that we should be thinking about, and we'll wait what the Cabinet provide as a response, because from what's been going around the chamber, there's an awful lot of issues that you've raised with your paper, like the management of the trees. Some of you may have missed it, but on page 66 of today's papers, we've got a new service projected pressure implementation of the tree management strategy, three quarters of a million a year for the next five years. So that's not these trees that are going to be planted, it's the ones that we've already got on the verges after the tragic accident in Stafford. But I do think that Jill's got it right about, do you want food? Do you want fuel? And do you want leisure? Because you can have one, but you can't have all three. And my day job at the moment seems to be involved with natural capital, sustainable farm incentives, which the government are rolling out even as I speak. And just for the, you know, I'm trying to think of the, I think it's Woodall Farm at Market Drayton, the community farm, have put a call out for volunteers to plant 3,000 trees on their farm. Not all the farm, just in selected areas that aren't very productive. So who's going to plant these trees? Who's going to maintain them? There are payments within the sustainable farm incentive for a farmer to claim to maintain the trees that he's planted on his farm, but there are so many legal implications and planning implications that, I'm sorry, they won't do it. You lose your agricultural property relief. HMRC will be after you for taxation because you're not farming. There's a whole host of, you know, you're lifting the lid off a can of worms that you may never actually get to the bottom of with this. I was, you get a payment for managing your hedge rows and overseeing and viewing them, and, you know, for David's benefit, you go on the rural payment agency's maps of your farm and you click on a field, and they've already measured every single hedge in your field, and they've measured all the gaps. There's a £17 a metre payment if you plant the gaps in your hedges. If you plant a new hedge, there's a £27 a metre payment. Most farmers have not even discovered this. We've dropped 7,000 active farmers in the first six months of last year. Mid last year, there were 113,000 farmers, and only 5,000 have embarked on the sustainable farm incentive route. An awful lot of them got to go. And that is why we're not out on tractors demonstrating and bringing the country to a halt, because they haven't gone down that route on the continent. They've gone down a route of getting rid of red diesel, telling you to set aside on about 25% of your farm. In Holland, they've compulsory purchased 3,000 dairy farms and shut them down. They've allowed imports from Ukraine to come into their countries. That's why the Polish farmers are demonstrating on the border and blocking stuff there. The world, the global world out there at the moment is a bit of a mess. The price of wheat at the moment's down at £160 a tonne, it will be 200 by the end of this year. So food security is something that people need to think about, and I do hope that that is taken account of in the Cabinet's response.
councillor Johnny McMon.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Huckfield's absolutely right about the association between trees and health. And there is an intimate association, not always, but on many occasions, between mitigating global warming and improving public health. And this is just one example, because trees not only spit out oxygen and absorb carbon dioxide, but they also, many of them, and many hedge rows as well, absorb particulate matter, improve health as a result, and people who live round trees are thought to live longer than they would do otherwise. And I hope it's not lost on the members here of that association, and it needs not to be lost at Cabinet when you make the decisions about how to go forward with mitigating global warming locally. Thank you.
councillor Simon Tag.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to echo the thanks of the working group that councillor Thompson chaired. I came along to a couple of the meetings, went on site visit as well to Norbury. I think it's a really good piece of work and really sort of begin to answer, well, look to answer those questions that many people have raised today on a policy moving forward, how we do use tree planting and other methods of planting to help to offset carbon as we go future on our plans. Just to respond to some comments, I think from councillor Yates, we do work with the National Forest, with the Forest of Mercy, with the Woodlands Trust. We also plant trees on business parks in the last couple of years and also on our country park estates as well. So I think, obviously, Mr. Yates did criticise in the budget discussions about he didn't see any sort of green policies in the budget. Well, there are plenty of strategies that sit behind there, and also next on the agenda is the environment strategy, which are helping us to educate our budget decisions and also policy going forward, and a little bit more detail than the back-of-the-fag paper budget amendment, which unfortunately, Mr. Yates brought to us earlier on, which fell flat on its face. I think councillor, Mr. Atkins, has really sort of hit the nail on the head there, that we have to be very careful with our land uses, particularly when we come to county farms and food security. But there is also an opportunity of the tree planting agenda, and that is through, you know, new skills and new business opportunities for the use of that wood in the sustainable building agenda that will gather pace as we move towards the end of this decade and into the next, as we move towards 2050. So I think we have to take that into account as well. I think councillor Huckfield, in your area particularly, I know that 850 trees have been planted in Silverdale for the 850 celebrations Lime Forest, also on Silverdale Roundabout, which is, sorry, Lights, which is right by the Wallace Quarry landfill, trees have been planted there too. And I think the health, as councillor McMon said, the health benefits of trees are clear, and in our area particularly with the problems which I completely agree with him from Wallace Quarry are causing distress continually to our neighbours, and you'll see our residents and our neighbours, is that in the questions that are coming up later, question two from councillor Sweeney, you'll see my position as a local member is plain that that Wallace Quarry should be closed down, capped and restored to it, and tree planting will be part of that in the future on that site as well. We call on the EA to do their job, which they failed to do for the last couple of years, and ease the suffering of local people in Newcastle on that one. So I think this report gives us a lot of food for thought. I think as we take it forward, Cabinet will look at it carefully and bringing those proposals forward and integrating that into the plans we already have as part of our carbon reduction agenda and also our environment strategy as well. But as I say, welcome the report and look forward to working with the group of councillors. I hope we'll reconvene and look at another area of our climate change agenda in the future, will that be down to them, and look forward to working with them on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item four on the leading statement, which is the natural environmental, natural environment strategy. I have no speakers. Simon, councillor Simon Tag, do you want to come back on this one?
Thank you, Chairman. Really pleased that we brought this, I think it's a vital contribution to our natural environment that the county council can play through the land that it owns across the county, many great places which people use for leisure, use for recreation, all sorts of things, and we are working to help to maintain those and reach what we want to do, as that is enhancing those and including more biodiversity in those sites. Of course, we are aware of the Environment Act 2021, which brought on new duties on to the county council in the area of the environment, and we've included those in the strategy as well. And it links in also to the motion which this council passed in 2022, which is for that nature recovery declaration. So it works closely with that. One thing I'd like to highlight is the case studies that are included in the policy document that came forward already across the county. This county council, along with partners, is working to protect the environment and enhance the environment. To just point out a few, woodland planting in Kingswood, Lake Saigon in Cannock, flood nature storage at St Leonard's School in Stafford, a place where there is obviously a lot of flooding at the moment, particularly with the weather we've been having over the past few months. A gardening for better health in Burton, focusing on helping communities to grow food with health and environmental benefits. Move More Moorlands, an initiative to encourage more active lifestyles using the great, you know, country parks and green spaces they have over in Staffordshire Moorlands. And in Cannock Chase, again, working in partnership with experts' advice from the Staffordshire Wildlife Trust, a key partner of ours, on a programme of habitat creation. So this is all, you know, where we live, there are things going on in Newcastle, in other areas as well, where we're trying to enhance our public access to particularly country parks, which we have across the county, and we need to ensure through the strategy that we develop them further, and I commend this strategy as Cabinet accepted and that members have a look at it, look at the detail and work with us on implementing that strategy to protect our green spaces going forward and the environment and bring back nature. Thank you.
councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've just rise briefly to pay tribute to councillor Tag and all the hard work that he's doing on the natural environment strategy and all the other strategies that sit behind it. It's a tribute to him that he's been able to bring together all the districts, boroughs and the city council together on the nature recovery strategy on the back of the resolution that came to council in 2022. This is a wide-ranging subject, and lots of people have got lots of opinions about this, but the work that Sam Thompson and her team have done, bringing forward ideas, has been extremely helpful. It's been a broad effort involving many councillors. I'm delighted to see as much input as we've had from across the board, not just from councillors around this chamber, but also from other constituent authorities at the leaders' board. So thank you to councillor Tag for all the work he's doing. He continues to make incremental progress, incremental improvements, and they're affordable improvements more importantly as well, and more power to his elbow, and I hope he continues the progress.
Thank you. Moving on to item six on the leading statement, which is here to help, a progress update. Sorry, I'll say again. councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to speak quite briefly on this. Overall, I think this shows what this council, together with volunteers, partners, districts and boroughs, and all other members of the public can bring together to help and support people within our community. But I just wanted to highlight two particular points, and that's the work done through the family hubs, particularly about the work we've done to give guidance and support and signpost people around being able to manage budgets and cooking and those type of things. And also the holiday activity and food programme. And also the, the holiday activity and food programme that has provide, that provides, as the word says, activities during the holidays for, for children, for children, together with a nutritious meal. Thank you.
councillor Victoria Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon to you. So I've been listening within this morning. It's wonderful, isn't it? Not only do we have a five year balanced budget in this county, not only do we have jobs aplenty and a fantastic national, natural environment strategy, we also have a countryside estate investment. Good news that's coming forward, so watch this space. But on top of all of that, on top of all of that help and that fantastically solid foundation that we have in this county, we also have the Here to Help campaign. And I've mentioned this before, but as you all know, that this started back in October 2022. We were focusing on residents and offering help to those that really needed it, those vulnerable people. We've had seventy one thousand people actually go onto the page and look for advice and guidance and direction. As my colleague has mentioned, we've had the holidays, holiday activities and food with a hundred and ninety nine thousand sessions offered to children in this county. We've had the community fund, which we allocated around a million pounds to V C S E groups and organisations in twenty two and twenty three. And also the warmer home scheme, which has allowed six hundred and fifty thousand pounds to go to residents that really needed that, that extra help. And then, as you'll know, we've got the, the library service, which has helped with the, the children's school uniforms. I think we've managed to save sixty thousand pounds to residents in this county for that purpose. So there's a massive amount going on in this county. I'm very proud to, to be able to say all this. This work will continue. We're going to carry on with the, the cost of living partnership and give regular updates to, to the leaders board and to the CEO partnership. So watch this space, it carries on, the good, good work continues. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. Moving on to item six on the leading statement, which is the survey. Sorry, you, you, once, once the, sorry, I'll put my mic on. Councillor Pardsey, once the cabinet member has spoken, that, that's the end of the debate. And your name clearly wasn't there prior to that. Thank you. Now, moving on to item six on the leading statements, which is the service provision of temporary and interim staff resources. I have no speakers and I'm happy to move on quite quickly to item seven on the leading statement, which is the Ofsted report. councillor Tom Luthrurud.
Happy New Year, Chairman. Sorry for getting, best wishes to councillor Hockfield's wife. Usually I'm not very precise, but I'm going to be here. I've had time to go and have a look through this. And I have three simple questions, which I don't mind the cabinet member comes back to me on. One, I know that there's flexibility on this, but when is there going to be a time? Is there a realistic timeframe? Do we know what it is? Two, are they, are these all matters going to be dealt with in order priority? For example, item number three on this, in this matter talks about the effectiveness and oversight of allegations against positions of trust undertaken by local authority designation officer. And thirdly, in regards to items regarding partnerships, are we going to have direct input from young people and, you know, are the responsible adults as part of that? I don't mind getting back from cabinet member and some other point. Thank you.
councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think we all found the Ofsted verdict very disappointing, particularly want to focus on the lack of effective partnership working, because I think that's particularly worrying. I think we saw during the Covid pandemic that local partnerships began to work much better. And so what I'm asking is, is what is the county council going to be doing to ensure that we do improve our partnerships on health, on housing and on dentistry? To make sure that our young people get the best possible outcomes they possibly can.
councillor Bob Spencer.
Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to offer some information, I suppose, just some reassurance around this particular report as someone who is charged with chairing the safeguarding committee. These points here, for those other members who are sitting or also members of that committee, they will come as no great surprise, because these are the very things that we hold various people to account for at almost every meeting. And I thought it was really, or I hoped it would be useful just to offer some reassurance. The first point there that talks about how we as an organisation manage or in partnership with those, manage that sort of longitudinal threat and risk to some of the most vulnerable young people in our communities, is ever more challenging, ever more sophisticated. And of course, the challenge and the difficulty of getting that right, the consequences of getting it wrong, rather, are not worth thinking about. However, can we improve that? Yes, we can. It's something that is constantly being challenged at the safeguarding committee. And I would also point out, this isn't about those decisions being right or wrong. It's, it's more to do with the supervision. Those other people on the committee will also recognise the second point, one about data. I know that it's one of those things that I particularly go on about at some length. That's not to say we don't have the data, we do. It's just that data now is much more sophisticated. But yet again, that was raised probably two years ago. People are working hard to improve that as, as we speak. The other bits about partnership, and I recognise the point that's just been made. We had the safeguarding report from the independent assessor recently. And it's fair to say it was less than complimentary about some of the partners. Yet again, people will know on the committee, it's us that is holding other people to account. It's us that are inviting those partners in to make sure, I'm sure they're all very busy, of course. But there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes to make sure that these points that we already know about, that we're already addressing, you know, can we improve them? Yes, we can. Have we already recognised that we can improve? Yes, yes, we have. And I would just finish with a point that one of the privileges for me and the other people on the committee is that we get to ask questions of some of those officers on a regular basis about these very points. And I just wanted to offer that reassurance that actually it is a privilege to sit there and hear just how hard people are working, our staff are working, and how they go that extra mile to keep some of the most vulnerable people in our communities safe. We are looking to improve. We already know where we need to go, that we've already made huge leaps into making those improvements. But I just wanted to reassure people that the work is already ongoing. And I very often am more than satisfied that actually we are doing everything we can to maintain that safeguarding responsibility. Thank you.
councillor Moxton.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. We were inspected at the back end of last year by, by Ofsted and the report was published in January of this year. Now, although the experience and progress of children in our care was rated as good, children's service overall was rated as requires improvement to be good. And I think it's important that we emphasise that, requires improvement to be good. Children's services have been in Staffordshire good for the last ten years. So it is really important that we carefully reflect on this judgment. However, we completely and utterly accept the findings and I can assure everyone here that we are fully committed to improving our services. And that work has already started. In fact, it started, you know, the day that we got the informal feedback on the Friday in November. A comprehensive development improvement plan is being developed and that will be pushed through via the Children's Improvement Board, to which we have already appointed a independent chair who is an experienced D C S. The areas that we need to improve on, which have been highlighted a little bit, but I will go, go into them in a little bit more detail. The quality and effectiveness of contacts, referrals and assessments in the front door. The effectiveness and impact of performance data and quality assurance to drive practice improvement. The effectiveness and oversight of allegations against those in positions of trust and the effectiveness of partnership working, particularly with health and housing. But I will emphasise the fact, at no point did they question the direct work done by practitioners with children and families and see any examples of where children were deemed to be unsafe. So we were moving forward, working on the following actions, stronger performance targets with more structured monitoring, a clearer escalation process for children and young people who don't feel that their case, their matter is being dealt with quickly enough. Closer work with health and housing providers. And on the health front, I've already met with both the chair and the chief exec of the I C P and Integrated Care Board to ensure that that partnership working can be, can go forward. And just prior to the Ofsted inspection, we actually did do a housing workshop with housing representatives from government and across, and across the county. So that work will continue. We've already invested five million pounds in, in, in the, in the services, in particularly in additional staff and increase the grade, the gradings of some social workplaces, which will assist greatly with recruitment and retention. There was in the report considerable amount of good things, but that doesn't take away from the fact that we are requires improvement to be good. So I would ask members to read it in detail and I will certainly bring updates as we go forward. The Children's Improvement Board itself will be pushing that. There will be an operational board as well. And also Ofsted report will be going to scrutiny so they can look at what is going forward so that we can ensure that when we have a focused visit in what now will probably be about nine, 10 months, we are well on the way to ensuring that we are good. Our frontline practitioners are dealing with over five thousand children at this moment in time. And I am particularly proud of the work that they do and the commitment and dedication they show to improving the lives of children, vulnerable children within our county. There is total commitment from me, from the Cabinet and senior leaders to do what is required to ensure our staff are fully supported to continue with the continued development so that we can once again be graded as good in Staffordshire. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First of all, I'd just like to echo councillor Sutton's points about the staff that we have in children's services. They do a wonderful job every single day of the week. And we, we, we absolutely support their work and, and hope that they continue to evolve and develop to deliver the great services that we have for children. There are some gaps though, and councillor Sutton has highlighted those gaps. And I just wanted to give council reassurance that as we were progressing through the Ofsted inspection and immediately afterwards, the chief executive and I were in contact with each other immediately and also over the weekend of that inspection, as he was developing and evolving a plan for improvement. Both myself and the chief executive take this incredibly seriously. And as a result of that, I decided that we would appoint an independent chair with a robust and deeply experienced view of children's services and how they can be, go from requires improvement to be good, to be good. Councillor Atkins correctly identifies the great partnership working we had during the Covid nineteen pandemic. We want to augment those partnerships to include children in a more, in a greater way than they currently are. It is a, it is something that we at Staffordshire County Council have to continually, continually remind our health colleagues of the importance of children within the health system. The, the I C P has a strategy which focuses on starting well and growing well. But we've also got to remind ourselves that that is a very broad subject. And we need to focus on those areas where children are struggling and make sure that they can live fulfilling lives here in Staffordshire. Be clear, we know what work needs to be done. We have a plan and we're in the process of implementing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight on the leading statement, which is the highways investment. I have no speak, oh, I do have some speakers, very, very sweet fingers there. councillor Michael Sutherland.
Chairman, chairman, I'll be very quick.
councillor Sutherland, just, just give me a second. Thank you for the reminder, councillor Parry. I will try keep a close eye on that based on your very good advice. Thank you. councillor Sutherland.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Parry, apologies. Eager Beaver. I'm going to say, as members, highways and highway systems are vital to our day to day job. And I guess we're quick to actually impart experiences where the system doesn't work for us. Well, if I can take you back to last weekend, at three o'clock, I got a phone call. It wasn't a very good one, a resident telling me, you won't believe this, but it's true. You'd better come out and have a look. The drain gullies on, on a, on a busy side road have been stolen. So I duly went out and sure enough, they're gone. Right, so what the hell do I do? I go online, an emergency number, which I rang, which I thought, this is terrific. And on it, there was a message. Thank you very much for calling this number. We're now closed for the weekend. However, what I didn't do, I didn't wait and I wasn't patient. I rang David and said, you won't believe this, give me a call, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, I went back on and I rang the number. And all we do, we, we actually do need to correct it. But after the, that announcement that we're closed for the weekend, it then goes on to say, if you've got issues here, here and here, here's what you do. I waited for the highways one to come up. I gave them my message and, and I left my number. I have to say personally, at that moment in time, it's now nearly four o'clock. I thought, God, this is not going to be resolved. What can I do locally? But I did get a phone call in about twenty minutes later from highways going through the issue. And I will tell you that I also got two phone calls to say, yes, we've identified it. Two, we're going to be there and we're going to put emergency covers in. By half past six, they were out, job done. And I was able to, so I, I say that David, do pass on my thanks to the highways team that were involved at the weekend, but also to the system, it works. Thank you.
councillor Bernard Peters.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. The major improvements in, and to Horning Glow Road North in my division is likely to cause some significant disruption. But I'd like to extend my thanks to the responsible officer team, who have worked tirelessly and very, very hard indeed to ensure the communication strategy that goes with this piece of work is clear, precise and easily understood. And that's the messages I'm getting back from grumpy people who live in the area who realise it's going to put them out for a few weeks. But yes, the improvements are necessary and we will deliver on time, I hope. And it'll be a very, very much appreciated completion of a major project in Burton. Once again, in addition to the work that was done at the Clay Mills Junction. So congratulations to the highways team.
councillor Philip Hudson.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I welcome the extra fifty million pounds to be spent on our roads over the next three years. And I welcome this, this investment. I think every member can say that in their division, we are now starting to see good work and improvement. There's still a long way to go, and particularly in my division, because it's a main route for H G Vs going to very important industrial areas within Staffordshire. It's imperative that we maintain these roads, because when they were first built twenty, thirty years ago, they didn't have the amount of traffic that we have now. And we didn't have these big H G V vehicles that we now have on our roads. I think there's an increase of sixteen tonnes, David, to each vehicle before it's even, even loaded up. So I very much welcome that. The prosperity scrutiny committee, I know our chairman, we scrutinise highways quite effectively each time it comes up. But the positive thing was from the team is that we're, we're constructive in what we discuss at the meetings and we put a lot of good things forward on behalf of. forward on behalf of all of our members and behalf of all of the residents of Staffordshire. The adverse weather conditions has obviously been causing us some concern, so that slowed down productivity really, and I understand it's snowing in Utuxeter at the moment, so we're, you know, have a safe journey home. But David, it's, it's coming on. I like the things that we discussed at the last meeting where people are going to be able to report multiple defects, which will help rather than to keep doing it one at a time. There's still room for improvement, still room for when we inspect some of the roads and make sure that the job has been done good, but other than that, it's very positive, and I think the way future is very good. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hudson. A speech combined with a weather forecast, that's the first today, I believe. Councillor David Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I think when we present petitions to the council, we often feel that they disappear into the ether, and nobody ever does anything about it, and we might just as well not have bothered, but we perhaps feel better for having done it. I'm delighted to say that I presented a petition to this council regarding problems that we have with highways on an adjoining authority. I'm very, very pleased to say that that petition was taken to Walsall Council and has been passed to the Cabinet, and the Cabinet have now invited a representative of Stonle to actually go to the Cabinet meeting and address them on the problem. And I'm confident that Walsall, although it's not our investment, it's the investment of an adjoining authority, that that investment will take place, and that the whole thing will be perhaps not resolved because of volumes of traffic, but at least there will be a degree of control. So the referendum was not a waste of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Smith. I rarely, to the point of never making comment, but on this occasion I am going to. As far as making a petition is concerned, I think it's really important. Councillor Mamon and I made a petition about a new crossing assisted with councillor Hayden, and we had the new crossing, so there are great, real good instances of petitions working. Councillor Paul Snape.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the other members, some canisters will know, I've perhaps had more money spent on my division from highways than the rest put together. And for that, I do thank Mr. Parry, Mrs. Salmon, and Mr. Williams. But the only problem is when you have that, it causes disruption across, across your area, traffic lights, say, generally disrupted in the town centre. And I'm just asking for anyone who's watching this podcast from, from my division, Rome wasn't built in a day, as Sabre's just said to me. It's going to take time, perhaps another 20 or 30 weeks, but it's making a great improvement to our roads across the town centre. It's helping business. The cycle lanes have been put in. A lot of people said they never wanted cycle lanes, but really for the two high schools, it's going to give the opportunity to go from home address, where councillor who lives on the big estate there, up into the town centre and home in the evening. It's going to help people through this investment, and it is a lot of, lot of money into the town centre, which I'm grateful for. It's going to make a big difference to people's lives. So the more we can put in, we had money from, from the governments, we know, but as a council, we've put so much money into our highways investment, and the roads are getting better, as we've heard earlier. The amount of, is it 16,000 items, as you've said, that is all for the investment that this council, this cabinet have put in on behalf of all the members, but more importantly, on behalf of business and the residents of our county, and I thank you all for it.
councillor Graham Hutton.
Thank you, Chairman. My colleague here, councillor Thompson, has told me, be positive, be nice, because I was going to be horrible earlier about a statement that was made. So I am going to be positive and nice. I would like to publicly thank my highways team for, A, their responsiveness, B, their understanding, and C, the fact that they respond as soon as they possibly can. Now, for people that, for a team that have suffered long-term sick, and I'm delighted that David Greatbatch is making a speedy recovery and come back to work, but they're, they're an amazing team. And please, David and Daryl, please take back my thanks for the whole of my team that work in my, my division. Thank you very much.
councillor Jean Francis.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to reiterate what's just been said, I'd like to pass on my thanks to David and the team, and my highways team that we've got in Stafford in particular is absolutely fantastic. Richard Raisin's doing a great job, Lisa Hall is absolutely fantastic, and they've got a great team working from Stone Depot, I was up there in a meeting last week, and I can't thank them enough. They're doing a great job, and pass on my best wishes to all of them, please.
councillor Sid Asane.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm a bit confused and, and very relieved sad. Just to remind everyone, this council, in my small experience, found a place, a centre of local government excellence. To remind everybody, to show anybody, to say the word, you wanted to be horrible, I would not take it, and we are not here to be horrified by anything. On the same token, Mr. Chairman, I would like to pass my tribute to my chair, to my highways team, and for their tremendous support I am getting. Yes, we have a long mountain to climb, but we are always with them in this journey, and I also appreciate cabinet members endeavour to engage the community, and I can assure as a county councillor, I will be with this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I put my, put my light on with a, with a purpose that some others put their light on to do as well, but I've kept it on because I think it bears, it bears saying, which is to say a big thank you, particularly to our workers who are actually out there on the highway. We've talked about some of the officers who manage things today, and the politicians who have worked really hard to get this, this really large investment programme, the largest one we've seen in the county for many years. But I'm particularly interested in the people who are out doing the work on the roads. I went along to Horning Glow Road on the 16th of February, which, if people don't remember the weather forecast for that day, I can say it was accurate, because it forecast minus three, and it bloody well was. Actually cold enough that they had to swap their work programme around because they couldn't put concrete down, because it was too cold, so they were doing ironworks that day instead. But what a great bunch of people. I always try and go out whenever there's any work going on in, in east Staffordshire or near to somewhere where I'm going to be. You never fail to get a warm welcome, and you see how they interact with members of the public as well. They are nothing but considerate, working really hard on our behalf, come rain or shine, or freezing cold temperatures. And it's been pleasing others have mentioned them, but I wanted to add my voice to those, saying thank you very much to them. And I think anybody who's passing by, whether they're councillors or members of the public, stop and say thank you to them, they're working really hard on our behalf every day of the year.
councillor Anne Edgela.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Chairman. I just again once to give my thanks to the highways team. I'm so excited that there's work starting on the A34, and they're doing all the survey now in the evening, and when I'm driving home at night and seeing all the traffic lights and all the men in the Heysby's jackets walking around in rain, snow, or blow, I'm feeling a bit sorry for them, but I'm so pleased that the work has started. And to reiterate what councillor Francis said, the highways team in my division are doing a fantastic job, so thanks to Lisa Hall and Richard Raisin, and also for letting me have input into how the scheme's going to be working, which I feel I'm very, very grateful, so thank you.
councillor Davy Williams.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for everybody for your comments and the praise. I think the highways teams do deserve that. Remembering we've still got our teams out there and they're doing the gritting, and they're the same people who fill the potholes in the summer, and they're now out doing the gritting, and they'll be doing that for at least the next 24 hours with the prospects of snow. When it comes to the investment, however, I just will remind everybody that this administration has put £15 million in in the last two years, and it's putting another £50 million in over the next three years. We're also looking at what we can get out of HS2, although that's been devolved quite differently to what everybody might think, so it's not happened where the huge amount of money that we have been promised comes in 10 years, starting 11 years, as the same amount. We get a small amount for this year and next year, but we're going to put that to its best use as possible, and I think that's, that's the main thing with the highways investment. And it's something that Mr. Parry continually tells me about, that if whatever we're doing and whatever penny we spend on highways must be able to be accounted for and used effectively. And I think it has been. 16,000 defects, more than ever. We have reduced the work, work stack for the first time for such a long time, and actually we are now biting into the work stack. Despite, and I will bring this to you, despite two years of being one of the wettest years that we've had, and the wet, the water is the part that actually causes the damage to the roads, not just ice, but just normal water. So despite those issues, despite the weather and its issues that's come up with it, we are doing more than ever, and actually, they're out there now, and we've brought forward a, a work stack again on potholes, and they're still repairing these defects. So again, really positive, really going forward, and I think when it comes to investment, we've done it frugally, but very conscientiously, and I think we've done the right things there. So I do thank Mr. Parry for his sage advice on what we can and can't spend, but I think we're doing the right ways. Thank you.
councillor Allen White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'd just like to highlight the fact that the gritting teams are out there right now, so hopefully you will have a safe journey home. Tribute to you as councillors, by the way, probably the hardest thing you do on a sort of day-by-day basis is deal with your inbox, which is probably predominantly to do with the highways. I know some members get a harder time than others. Councillor Asane, you've got to go a long way to beat the hard time that you get, I get copied into quite a few of those. But anyway, I just wanted to remind people of the scale of the investment that we're putting in. It's £41 million of revenue funding, that's day-to-day stuff, and £73 million worth of capital funding. That's a lot of money that we're putting into highways. But let's just remind ourselves, and I don't want to sort of be the party pooper, there's still a lot of work to do, still a lot of work to do. We're not sitting in this chamber now just slapping each other on the back and saying what a great job we're doing. We're also acknowledging the fact that we've still got an awful lot that we need to get done, and there's an awful lot that your residents want you to get done, and you've got that opportunity to prioritise. So let's keep at it, let's keep working through the winter identifying those areas that need to be repaired, work with the teams, they're a great team, we're putting the investment in, but we do know that there's still more to do.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine on the leading statement, which is the Branton Interchange Project. councillor Julia Jessel.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and I, I will be brief because I have stood up before and expressed sincere thanks for all the efforts that the officers made in conjunction with Nertons to secure some levelling up funding to enable this interchange to go ahead. Otherwise, our desire for more homes for people would have come to a halt. It's allowing the building out of Branton Lox, which will provide a whole range of houses, from low cost, from social housing, up to executive-type housing, and it would have been really so damaging to the local economy, to local populations, if that development couldn't have gone ahead. But I think one thing I want to say, and it's picking up on something councillor Snape said, huge investment, there's going to be huge disruption. The phase, first phase has started, and weather permitting, it will be completed on time. But I have to say thank you to the officers and to AMI engineers. Phase one was originally going to involve four weeks of a road closure that served Burton Rugby Club and the John Taylor Free School, causing major chaos. Negotiating with highways engineers, we've managed to get that down to two weeks, one week of which is the school half term. So I think it's just a message to the members of the public out there who don't really appreciate what we do, and I mean what we collectively do, that actually, working with the professionals, we are aware of disruption to people, and we do try and make sure that that is minimised. That is something we do as our day jobs, but I don't think people out there actually realise the full extent of how we get involved and how we try to get the best for them. So I would thank Daryl and his team, AMI engineers, because we've actually achieved something that won't totally stop the disruption, but will mitigate it. Thank you very much, Chairman.
councillor Davy Williams.
Just, just as a positive note on this one, this is a really good scheme that's been, was given some money from government, but also showing our conservative values of making sure that we get in business to actually contribute a large amount to this. So it's a really good thing because it's going to allow housing, it's going to allow jobs, it's going to allow better access off the A38, and this is really positive scheme. So I think it just shows exactly what can be done, and as, and as councillor Jessel's already said, we've liaised with the companies to make sure we can reduce the amount of disruption as much as possible, and it is therefore a short amount of hurt for a large amount to gain. Really positive and just shows exactly what this administration's all about. Thank you.
councillor Philip White.
Yep, thank you very much, Chairman. This is, this is good news, and it is a good example of what this council strives to achieve, which is infrastructure to go along with the economic growth. This, this is a major employment site and a, a housing development site at Branton Box, which is needed in Burton. Burton is a, it is a growth area, people want to move there to live and to work. And it's, it's a site where a lot of infrastructure has already been provided, not least the first new secondary school in Staffordshire in a generation, where I should declare a small interest, my wife is an English teacher, and is going to be held up in the traffic that will be caused by these works. But I think most people can see what they are getting for that trouble. And I'd just like to pause briefly on, on the point that councillor Williams mentioned about, about the private sector. So the, the developer of Branton Lox had an obligation to contribute towards this infrastructure, quite rightly so, through the planning process, but actually, through this council's work to secure these millions of pounds of levelling up fund money, we were able to negotiate an enhanced contribution from them for an even better scheme that will provide even more benefit to residents in Burton. So that's a really good example of the way that we do things here, so that infrastructure-led development, but actually working really hard to squeeze every last drop out of it as well, and get the private sector to contribute more than they had to. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10 on the leading statement, which is the National Apprenticeship Week. I have no speakers, so councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chairman. So another really, another really important thing here, so we've talked about infrastructure a moment ago and economic development, but skills are the lifeblood of the economy, and a good job is the gateway to a good life for most people. And one of the best routes to securing a good job is to gain the skills that you can gain through doing an apprenticeship. Staffordshire has a, has a really good track record in terms of apprenticeships, 6,300 new starts last year, as we can see here, and this council works really hard in terms of supporting those, both through partnerships with others, so through our employment and skill strategy, working with training providers, FE colleges, universities, employers, local authorities, to make it as easy as possible for organisations to employ apprentices and to train them, and particularly working with small and medium-sized businesses, who can find that a little bit harder to do. But the other thing, as this item highlights, is to lead by example. So we now have upwards of 100 apprentices here at the county council, across a vast array of different occupations, and another 100 within our maintained schools. So leading by example there. The other thing I will just mention is, I was delighted to see this week that the government announced the first apprenticeship standard for trainee teachers. Going back to my wife, who trained to be a teacher a few years ago, she would have loved to have been able to do it through an apprenticeship and while she learned, and I think it's fantastic that we've got that along with the vast number of other occupations you can now train for through an apprenticeship. So something we're working really hard on in Staffordshire, and I think the results speak for themselves.
Item 11 on the leading statement, which is the dignity in care awards. Tom Lofreerud.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we come to the Care and Dignity Awards, we were celebrating the very best of our
When we come to the care and dignity awards, we are celebrating the very best of our county. It would be a bit amiss for me to not mention that my mother has been nominated for three of the last 10 years, rather than hoping she doesn't win. But of course, the reason why is that people like her recommend the best in this county. I'm very glad she went to our practice on here, because I've always felt that they get a lot of stick for doing a very good job, especially, I know from personal experience, the care sector. The reason why my mum was special mention during the lockdown was because she spent, she got a lot going to my birthday party, she didn't see me for a year because she looked after the young individuals. And I know of numerous cases. In fact, right now, I'm dealing with a case where an individual is not dealt with any dignity. And I'm glad that the county council, you know, is living by its words by helping this young individual. This is something we live on, day by day, and this council practises it. And I think we should celebrate those who go above, those who have, you know, shown dignity, looked after the most vulnerable, because that is the most important duty we have, look after those who are in care, those who need support. And as increasing demand comes upon them, underpaid, understaffed, I think that it's good that these awards are getting. And I'm very, I was delighted, it's the biggest, I remember watching this on line during lockdown, listening to the stories of people who've done it. It doesn't, there's nothing more rewarding than hearing the people that give us the best of this county. And I think this is something we should continue for as long as we can.
councillor Julian Pardesi.
Thank you, Chair. These dignity and care awards acknowledge, Chair, a small but important part that carers are holding our families together, they're enabling those that they care for to get the most out of life, and making an enormous contribution to society, and it needs to be acknowledged, saving our economy billions of pounds. Meaningful recognition, and I stress meaningful recognition, of the importance of unpaid care work to society as a whole, is vital to the wellbeing of the quality of the life of those that receive the care and those who provide it, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Paul Northcote.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman. I think still good morning, it's good afternoon now. Such an important facet of what the council are doing, as is our partnership with the Staffordshire University. I had the pleasure to meet with the executive dean from Staffordshire University last week to launch this, to recognise the, anybody working in adult care, whether it's paid or unpaid, is recognised. And over the last 10 years, this is our 10th year, Chairman, over the last 10 years, there's been over 1,000 people nominated for a dignity and care champion. So I urge people to apply and nominate their champion in their area. The April 28th is the deadline, and it's so easy to nominate a dignity care champion from the Staffordshire County Council website. If one does a search, it'll take you to that page, and help is also available to help you make that nomination. For this 10th year, we are pleased to announce there's an extra category, which having a major impact on our community is the mental health practitioners that are now active in our county. And to be recognised as part of this, I think is highly important to recognise, considering the mental health needs that we have in the community. This is such a valuable resource that often goes unsung, Mr Chairman, and I think that recognising it in this way, I think is a prime example of what Staffordshire is all about, and pleased to announce this is part of our administration. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
councillor Julia Jessel.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you to councillors Loughrurud and Pardesi for their comments, which are very valid in this context. I won't thank my cabinet support member, because he's stolen all my thunder. But actually, the information he's given is so important, and I really wanted to speak to say, this is a fantastic opportunity for people to nominate paid or unpaid carers. Some of them are very young people as well, and we sometimes forget that some of the most valuable carers are very young people. Some of the stories are heartwarming. I think society today, when you listen to the news, there's so much that is worrying, that is just not right, that actually, it does us all good to understand and to hear instances where people go not just the extra mile, they go the extra thousand miles to help people 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And it is heartwarming, and it is the good side of humanity. So please, councillors, do spread the word throughout your communities and your contacts to encourage people to nominate those who they believe have gone that extra mile. And it is the 10th year, and we have this event, a celebratory event in Newcastle. And I have to say that the first one I went to, I was bowled over. And everybody enters into the spirit of this. And I notice dear Dr Harling has just escaped, because actually, when I say everybody there enters into the spirit, Dr Harling gave us a demonstration on stage of his dance credentials. It is a really fun event, and I think all of us, from time to time, need to have a bit of fun. But as I say, he has escaped, but it really is a most tremendous award. I do hope it carries on for many, many years. And it's part of that raising the profile of carers, raising their status in our society, and giving that well-earned recognition. Thank you very much, Chairman.
councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. In case anybody's wondering, if you're thinking about how Dr Harling dances, think Peter Crouch and the robo-walk. As councillor Pardesi points out, I think if you want to find meaning in life, help another human being. That's where the real meaningful comes from. And many of you around the chamber do that on a regular basis. But at the dignity and care awards, that's an opportunity to celebrate it. And I've been there a few times when I was portfolio holder, doing councillor Jessel's job, and it was just wonderful to see so many people gathered together to celebrate the effort, the human endeavour of helping another person, some of whom were people with needs themselves. Sometimes there were children with learning disabilities who were looking after parents with learning disabilities, and the celebration is just absolutely wonderful. If you may just grant me a moment, Mr Chairman, just to stray slightly off the item, it is the time sometimes when people come to the end of their time doing a particular role, and councillor Jessel has decided that now is the time that she wishes to retire from the portfolio. I would like to take this opportunity, Mr Chairman, to thank councillor Jessel for all her efforts running the health and care portfolio. I did it for seven years, and it's a tough gig, running the health and care portfolio, believe you me. It has an impact on you, it ages you, I'm just 34, and... I sense some doubt, councillor Trowbridge. It is a hard job, but it's also very, very rewarding. But on the broader point, I've known councillor Jessel for over 20 years. We first came into contact with each other when I was chairing the joint waste management board for Staffordshire, and she would consistently hold my feet to the fire and make sure that if I said I was going to deliver something, it got delivered. And she's not changed a jot in that 20 years since, constantly making sure that standards are maintained and that we continue to deliver on behalf of our residents. It is said, and I'm paraphrasing, that all political careers end in failure. In councillor Jessel's case, it's not going to end in failure, it's going to end in a portfolio that is very successfully run, the budget is balanced for the portfolio. Yes, there are things that have been identified that still need to be done, and we're continuing to work on those. But I would like, on behalf of Staffordshire County Council, to thank you, Julia Jessel, for the hard work that you've put into this portfolio. I wish you the very best for the future. I know you're not going anywhere, and you're not dead, but you have put in a tremendous shift. Mike Wilcox will be taking over from councillor Jessel after this meeting, and I wish Mike the very best of success in doing that. But for this, it is now Julia's moment in the sun, and thank you, Julia, for everything that you have done.
I'd like to just echo the leader's comments there. Every time I've ever worked with you, you've been incredibly helpful and incredibly knowledgeable, and thank you personally for that. We now reach the last item on the leading statement, which is item 12, which is extra support for children in schools. councillor Philip Hudson.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This is last on the statement, but I think it's a very important area that we need to discuss. I've worked for the last 11 years in teaching with SEND children, and I acknowledge this very welcome project, where we're going to increase early intervention with children. I've worked for the last five years in Derbyshire, and at my school, we have two areas of intervention with SEND children. We have the nurture group, and we have the alternative provision. So nurture group are children who really need to be supported, to gain their confidence, to help them with their physical disabilities. And our alternative provision group is really people that are in danger of being excluded from education altogether. Children are not born naughty or bad, it's things that have happened along the way in life that turn them into what they are at this time. So it's very important that we intervene at a very early stage to try and break the cycle of behaviour, that we encourage our young people, that despite their disabilities or their learning difficulties, to be proud of themselves and that they can achieve. So it's important that we get in at an early stage there. And particularly with mainstream schools, I work in a mainstream school, and it's very difficult sometimes for the schools to get the ECHPs done, to get the funding in place. So it's important that we try and speed up those processes, and that we do get in to intervene at a very early stage. In Utoxity, we have first schools, middle schools and high schools. In other parts in the county, you have primary schools and high schools. So I had an email last week from a local councillor in Utoxity, talking about a primary school in Utoxity, which I've sent to Jonathan, and we're addressing that. But now that I've seen this, and that will allay some of the fears that this councillor had when she got in touch with me, and I've had other people throughout Staffordshire actually get in touch with me about SEND issues, Paul and myself dealt with one last year, didn't we? And I think, was it Graham Masters in Helborn? So it's very important, and I'm glad to see that we're doing this. If we can get in at an early stage, we can prevent things escalating, you know, and give our young people a good start in life, and that's what it's all about. Thank you.
councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Early intervention can make a real difference to the lives of children with special educational needs, but it does require the active support of schools. Now, some schools will step up to the plate and will do a great job, but other schools don't particularly want to be known for supporting special educational needs. And that can be deeply frustrating for the parents, and indeed for the child themselves. So what is the county council doing to make sure that those schools that are reluctant to give support to special educational needs pupils, what are they doing to ensuring that those schools do provide that support? I appreciate there's extra funding, but there has to be motivation in terms of the school leadership to ensure that those special educational needs pupils are embraced and welcomed.
councillor Anne Egil.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And could I just stray off the, a little minute, you know, we've talked a lot about children this morning, but please let us remember, it's Children's Mental Health Week, and I wanted to highlight this week to everyone in this chamber, children that are going through mental torture, in many cases not of their own making, in many cases, it is brought on by the people that should love and care for them. So let us remember the children in our care as we go through our busy lives this week and every week going forward. We as county councillors are all corporate parents, so please remember to spare a thought and a prayer for all children that are suffering mental trauma. Thank you. And going back to the subject of schools and everything, early intervention for mental health is the answer to a lot of problems. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Jean Francis.
Thank you, Chairman. I take the points Phil's made, and Charlotte's made, and Anne's made. Early intervention is the key to this. And I'm chair of governors at Marsham Special School, which, when I took over in 2009, I was elected to this council, we had 48 pupils in school. We moved the school from the south end of town to the north end of town, to the old day centre, and had it refurbished, back into what it was a primary school for SEND children. We've now got 160 children on roll, and my head teacher has turned away 20 children in the last month. And we're only taking children that are closer to home, which is quite the right thing to do. I used to be vice-chair of Greenall Special School. Greenall Special School was early intervention systems for children with cerebral palsy. I don't know how many people know about cerebral palsy and the condition it is, and what they can do for them. For our children, we had a harder therapy pool, which is now shut down because they can't afford to run it, and it's now an academy. So I don't know if we've got any influence there, which is very sad. But one of our pupils went on from with a cerebral palsy condition, went on to Oxford, and got her first, and she's a scientist with NASA. Now, the early intervention of these children is crucial to that, and I think, as a county council, we've done an absolutely fantastic job in the last 10, 14 years that I've been on this county council, looking after our SEND children, and Jonathan's passionate about it. The problem with Marsham's at the minute is we've got 160 pupils on roll, and we need to expand. We ain't got anywhere to expand to. So I've asked the head to set up a meeting with Jonathan and the intervention team next week or the week after to try and resolve the problem. But as far as SEND children go, if they're going to go into mainstream school, and I've been banging on about this for years, and I'm not sorry that I'm going to repeat myself yet again, as Charlotte's quite rightly pointed out, the school has got to be up to the job, the head teacher's got to be up to the job, and they've got to have the correct person doing the SENCO job, which is special educational coordinator. Without that, those children will fail. They have got to be in a situation where they've got the support to do the job properly, teachers, head, and the children, and the proper SENCO coordinator. I'll leave it at that, Chairman, for the minute.
councillor Jonathan Price.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. Huge amount spoken about there, actually, and I really appreciate the work that senior by councillors do around the SEND agenda. I don't think there's many councillors here who haven't inboxed me at one point or another to talk about SEND issues and delays potentially around educational healthcare plans within their own divisions with some of their families. So in the past, your alternative was to go down the route of an educational healthcare plan when you needed support with children with special educational needs. Not all of these children would now, if properly assessed early, with early support would require those educational healthcare plans, but actually just needed proper support put in place early. And this is what the enhanced assess plan, do review work is all about. We're also doing the CEDUS model as well, which is part of our accelerated progress plan, with which this work also falls within. And that's about working with mainstream schools to support them, keeping children safe, supporting those most vulnerable ones, and making sure that they get any support that they require with their SEND needs early, and making sure they stay within their own mainstream schools locally. It's important that parents can keep their schools locally... It's important that parents can keep their children locally within their local schools. It also reduces our transport costs, of course. This isn't why we're doing it. But it is very important that we don't have children travelling 45 minutes in either direction in the morning, but actually should be able to be supported within their own schools locally. If with this EAPDR that we find that the child requires more assistance than some basic assistance within school, of course, we would then pursue the educational healthcare plan route, try and still make sure that those children are supported within mainstream. And if not appropriate, then we would look at special schools as well. And John knows that we're working very hard with our special school estate at the moment and Marsham's as well, to make sure that we've got adequate provision within those schools, not just in our primaries, but in our secondaries as well. The SEDUS model and the EAPDR also means that schools will have to work with us to make sure that they've got that provision, that support financially as well, to support those children within school. And they will have to work with us. They'll also be under pressure from their peers as well. And a lot of our schools at the moment know whose those schools are that are not fully inclusive, and we do have some, as we all know. We also have good practice too. There are a lot of schools there are extremely inclusive and work really, really hard with our vulnerable children. I'm also pleased to say that the EAPDR has already been rolled out and we already have over 30 children that we're currently supporting with that early intervention. This is a significant shift within our authority on the way that we support our SEND children and also recognised by the Department for Education as a very, very good practice too, which is nice to see. I'm aware it's lunch, but I just wanted to say one very quick thing as well, that Mark and I have been out and visited most of the districts now within Staffordshire and myself personally have spoken to our SEND teams, who do an absolutely phenomenal job, an extremely difficult job behind the scenes. And also to Tim Moss and to Halit Halusi, who are absolutely passionate about SEND and making sure that our most vulnerable children within the community are fully supported. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to item seven on today's agenda, which is questions understanding order eight. Members, the six questions and answers have been circulated to members and published on our website. In accordance with the usual procedure, the questions and answers will be taken as read. I will allow each question of five minutes in which to ask a supplementary question and to receive an answer. And on each rate, no debate is allowed on the question. So the question one is councillor Yates to councillor David Williams. Do you have a supplementary question, councillor Yates?
Yes, thank you, Chair, I do. And yes, thank you very much for the answer. It's in line with what I expected. I did think there was going to be a substantial charge with using third-party apps. But what I'd like to see is an improvement. I noticed on the second page, in the meantime, we will review the front end of our reporting system. I think it wants a more structural review than that. I think it's a good system, but what I'd like to get to is one way you can actually walk up to a defect, whatever that is, with a smartphone and do it immediately within the reporting procedure. And if you doesn't do that, you have to do some dancing around with websites and things. So what I do ask is do you do or could you do benchmarking with other similar authorities? Because I've been checking around other authorities and reporting potholes in other places without actually pressing the send button, just to see how they work. And what I will say is that Kent County Council has got a very good system where when you identify the location, it actually comes up with all the details, including the what three words, and you can scan through, you can then put your photograph in. You don't have to move off the reported page on the smartphone. And that is really, really important, to do these things efficiently without losing the will to live and whatever. So the question is really, do you do benchmarking? And following that benchmarking, is it possible to review the complete system, how reports are uploaded immediacy within the vicinity of those defects?
Yeah, thank you for the supplementary question. I'm a little bit confused, as in you can go up to a pothole, take a picture and send the report while you're standing there, exactly you can. And it also has the north ends and east ends on the system. So I'm a little bit surprised that you've not been able to do that. Maybe you need to see the techie people outside and they might be able to do it, but you can do that. But we will always make sure that we will update and look at what we can do and improve the system, which is why we said we will do and we are continuing to do so.
I'll start again, so I've got my mic on, my apologies. The question two is councillor Sweeney to councillor Taggert. Do you have a supplementary, councillor Sweeney?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I was just poised then and you put me off my stroke. Yeah, for people of a certain age, I'm 66, so people listening will know what I'm talking about. When you went to school, you had a little glass file like this and you smashed it on the floor and you stamp on it. And that was a stink bomb. And that smell of rotten eggs is what the people in Newcastle have got to live with now. That's the smell. It's absolutely disgusting what these people have got to live with. What I'm going to ask the leaders as a supplementary question really is, next Wednesday, the Labour Party have called an extra council meeting or something to discuss the Wally's Quarry situation. Now, they're calling on the Environment Agency to suspend the licence of Wally's Quarry to carry on with their work. The Conservative Party are going to put forward another case to get the EA to actually close the quarry. Does the leader agree with me that the Conservative Party's view on this is more in line with what the residents of Newcastle feel? Thank you.
The question is to councillor Taggert.
It is, yes. Sorry, that's the leader.
Not the leader.
councillor Sweeney's already in next Wednesday night mode, aren't you there, councillor Sweeney? No, I completely, as I say, the answer to my question, as a local member in Newcastle, as a resident, I completely agree with you. And I'm quite mystified why, you know, the Labour amendment wants to take us back. We will amend that as a group up in Newcastle. But I think what I don't want to see is politics come into this issue and it's in that motion that's come forward. Unfortunately, there is political digs and political points being made. And I think we've, for the last couple of years, we've tried to avoid that. So it's very sad to see that from the Labour opposition in Newcastle.
Question three, councillor Charlotte Atkins to councillor Sutton. councillor Atkins, do you have a supplementary question?
To ask my supplementary, it's obviously worrying that the Children's Transformation Project has neither delivered the expected savings or a positive Ofsted verdict. Do you think that that has anything to do with the fact that we rely on expensive agency staff? Or why do you think that the Children's Transformation System, of which we put great store by, has not achieved a good verdict in Ofsted when we've had 10 years of good verdicts from Ofsted in the past?
Yes, councillor Sutton.
Thank you for the question. I think what's happened post the changes we have made and whether they have been effective or not. And what we have seen with Ofsted is a direct result of that, is a really, really difficult question. There's an awful lot of things that fit into this. There was initially the delay in the transformation, as we were unable to negotiate with the unions, that delayed it for a while. There was obviously then Covid. The children we're getting through are far more complex than were previously. You talk about agency staff. Within Staffordshire, it's about 10% at this moment in time. And as I alluded to earlier, that's quite a bit less than lots of other local authorities. But while myself and Jonathan were going round talking to staff, we were talking to agency staff and it was really, really difficult, you know, when we were talking to staff, to know whether it was an agency member of staff or whether it was one of our members of staff. And when I've spoken to the district leads and other people, you know, they are very, very complimentary of agency staff and the work they've done. So what I would definitely not say that this is about is because those agency staff are not doing what they are supposed to do. That is very much not the case. And many of those agency staff, when they've been offered opportunities to become permanent, have taken to become permanent. But a lot of those agency staff choose to be agency staff for a multitude of reasons. I'm not going to stand up here and pinpoint one particular thing as the rationale around where we are now with Ofsted. I think it's far too complex to say that. And I think ensuring that we move forward, as I've explained earlier, is the most important thing and working with partners and across the whole of the county.
Moving on to question four, councillor Pardsey to councillor Sutton. councillor Pardsey, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, I do, Chair. To what extent is it being taken into account that there is some suspicion by certain communities of vaccines as there is plenty of evidence on a national and global history of deceitful drug experimentation on certain communities? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Sutton.
First point I might say is that MMR vaccinations and that is actually a responsibility of the ICB and not a responsibility for this council. It may well be that the question is better placed with the ICB, but I'll endeavour to get an answer and come back.
Question five, councillor Asain to councillor David Williams. councillor Asain, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm grateful to the cabinet member for the answer and I hope as he set out, it would be done on time. Thank you for that. I don't have any supplementary to ask.
Thank you. Moving on to question six, which is councillor Afzal to councillor David Williams. councillor Afzal, do you have a supplementary?
I do, Chairman, thank you very much. Thank you for the cabinet member for the reply. Could I just ask the cabinet member to give me an update on the various trials of innovative highway repairs and resurfacing technologies, including the use of the locally manufactured JCP pothole?
councillor Williams.
Of course, I'll endeavour to ensure that officers get you that as soon as possible. And we have tried different things, so we'll make sure you get that receipt of that.
Moving on to item eight on today's agenda, which is petitions. I've been informed of one petition from councillor Richard Cox. Do we have any further petitions? councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you, Chairman, I will be brief. Due to the recent flooding that we've all experienced, but in particular in my division at Colton Parish, to the point that all access roads were subject to flooding, creating impassable vehicles unless you've got the big, heavy, high ones and so forth. So Colton has been isolated due to the local access roads becoming impassable. And this is becoming more common, which is affecting day-to-day life. It would prevent ambulances and emergency services getting through maybe, I say maybe. The action that they're looking for is that the concerned residents, family and friends of Colton, urge the Staffordshire County Council and other empowered bodies to take action to stop flooding on access roads in Colton. My adder was at the parish council last night. They understand stopping flooding may be a bit too much of an ambition, but it's a clear message, they just don't want to be isolated. So there's not that many signatures on it, but I think it's representative of a very small community that suffer badly when we do have these frequent rainfall. And I think it probably applies to the county. So on behalf of the Colton, I submit the petition.
Item nine on today's agenda is exclusions to the public. There are no exclusions to the public. Please enjoy your lunch, have a lovely afternoon and evening. Take care, bye.